Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of council at the Quispam sis Town Hall for October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is one oh five. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. Please vote. Beth is.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor is good, in favor. Motion carried seven zero. Thank you. May I have the land acknowledgement, please, by Deputy Mayor Schreier? It's okay. Go ahead, Councilor Donovan.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispam sis exists on the traditional territory of the Woolisstewig, Malasid, and McMack people whose ancestors, along with the Passe McQuaddie tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the seventeen hundreds. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight. May we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Item number two is Mayor's comments. So budget season falls this time of year, every year, and we are happy to set the path and the tone for what is to come in the coming year. So in two thousand and twenty six, this also always gives us a preview of what is, what's coming down for the two thousand and twenty six construction year, and for what's going to be happening as far as moving forward in Quispam sis. Quispam sis is a progressive town guided by a strategic plan that gives guidance and purpose to the important decisions council is responsible for making. The work carried out by our dedicated staff is grounded by the values and priorities established by council with direction given to staff who are responsible for gathering, supporting information by expert consultants to determine viability and costs of the priorities. The topics staff presents to council when structuring the capital costs to support growth in the coming year are areas for respectful conversations and eventual decisions. Staff recommendations are based on two streams. One is what council has identified as priorities, and secondly, what staff have identified as necessities to maintain pace with an aging asset management file that will have grave consequences if continually ignored. So it is fair to say that discussions during budget deliberations have moved far beyond the notion of two teams working independently of one another. It is not staff versus council, or council versus staff, which is, in the past, reflected what some believed was considered good stewardship of the public funds. Today, we know better, so we do better. Today, we will work together, not to gain a win for council or a win for staff, but as a team of people, some elected and some hired, to ensure we grow the town forward on evidence-based decisions. Reasons for spending public tax dollars cannot be based on personal preferences, but rather on what reflects this team of people serving current and future needs of the entire town. Thank you. Before we begin, I'd like to say that we are going to have a health break at two thirty. Also, a little bit different this year, we are going to have our team of directors give their proposals and their proposed budgets from their seats where they will also remain when questions are asked. So we'll have them go through, and if they feel that they want to stop and have, and answer questions, we will do that. If not, we will give them time to go through their, their proposals. So the first one up is the Proposed Capital Budget PowerPoint presentation, Guiding Principles Review. Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to council for agreeing to come together this afternoon to take first look at capital budget for both two thousand and twenty six and also for the two thousand and twenty six to two thousand and thirty periods. This is obviously an important conversation for us, and appreciative of Your Worship's comments. Thank you very much, Your Worship, with respect to the notion that this is a team discussion, and it's our first discussion. So I expect that we'll have robust thoughts and interchange with respect to the matters before us this afternoon, but we certainly welcome that, and with the goal of reaching a conclusion that we can all live with as being appropriate for the town's ongoing development. Just gonna double check that this is working for me. Oh, look at this. Okay, so excellent. Thank you, Tim. Somebody's put the power of the clicker in my hand, so bear with me. But all to say, agenda for this afternoon is, as you see before you, guiding principles. Then we'll chat about our recommended five-year plans on both the general capital and utility capital side. And because we want to make sure that you've got good visibility to that five-year plan. I think in the past, you've seen it in passing, but we have, as we've spoken before at council, in terms of budget process, taking a deeper dive into the five-year plan makes sense to us, and we're glad that you're receptive to that. But then certainly a deeper dive into two thousand and twenty six on both the general capital and utility capital side, recognizing that those are the decision points you'll eventually make for next year. And certainly time for conversation around adjustments that are important to you as we walk through the afternoon. So I'll look after those first two items, the guiding principles and our recommended five-year plans. Then Gary and Dana will guide discussion for two thousand and twenty six specifically. But again, the intent here is to invite some discussion with you, where you feel comfortable, where you have reservations, what adjustments, if any, that are important to you as a council before decisions are made. And I would also preface this afternoon's conversation by saying, our intent here is making sure that you have opportunity to be sure that the items you see, the proposed expenses you see, are appropriate. That's step one. If we don't have a complete and comprehensive view of what the total expense is, then all of the conversations that follow around financing, tax rate, et cetera, are all more difficult to be clear about. So we really wanted to make sure that we spend time this afternoon on being sure that you're comfortable with what you see as, in terms of total expense. Also, side note, but an important one, is in the budget documents that you've been provided, as well as in our presentation today, you will see very few assumptions about external funding. And we've done that deliberately, so that you see a very clean view of what we project as the total expenditure required by the town. What happens secondarily in terms of potential revenue sources through provincial, federal funding, or other funding sources, we, we need to have that conversation for sure, but it's all predicated on a very clean view of what the total expense of the town would be. So our thinking there is, let's start from that basement level, and recognizing, if for no other better term, it's a worst-case scenario, recognizing that any federal provincial funding would offset the total expense that you, we see here today. So, again, the intent here is make sure that these items are all appropriate to you, and that our discussion around financing and implication on the tax rate is really best held after you've also seen operating. So we know we have our operating session on, on the thirtieth. So again, the thought today is, no vote today, no decision today, but rather making sure that you're comfortable with the expense that you see, and if you're not, that we have conversation around how best to adjust that. So guiding principles, and I, I don't want to belabor this point, but there are some things here that are important grounding points to conversations like these ones. And, and you know, I think staff would probably roll their eyes at this point when I say, let's talk more about mission and vision, because they hear it fairly frequently from me. But at the same time, I try to preface those conversations around being sure that we're referencing them when times are tough. When it's an easy, straightforward operational decision, the mission, vision values of the organization are relatively clear to us and don't need to be a necessary deliberate barometer. But when we're making tougher decisions, or longer-term ones, ones that have lasting impact, it's important for us to be referencing these. So I would say that, you know, mission and vision does matter, and with respect to our community strategic plan, that we've committed together and at the highest possible level to what's most important. And our challenge is now to live by those words and making decisions that align with those commitments. And I think also importantly, that these are council's decisions, not individual ones. We're here to recommend, absolutely, but we're also here to have conversation as a council around what you want to have happen. And we'll be absolutely respectful of your direction in that regard. But it is not an individual effort, it's a council-based one. And finally, to offer that we've worked pretty hard to present you with options and recommendations that we're confident do align with Quispam sis' mission and vision. Specifically, when we talk about the mission of this organization, and this is taken directly from our strategic plan, you see reference here to council, management, and staff collectively providing. I think that reflects Your Worship's comments around making sure that this is a team effort. We're doing this together. You also see reference here to service excellence, and I would offer that service excellence does not mean good enough or mediocre, but rather this community has committed to something greater, something broader and something, something higher than at mediocre or average. And also, the comment here around forward thinking, to my mind at least, does not equal an annualized approach, but rather the need for a longer-term, a longer-term growth trajectory. And then finally, that's also referenced as sustainable growth, and to my mind, careful, deliberate consideration of growth that gradually builds our community in alignment with the municipal plan, in alignment with Recreation Master Plan, in alignment with our community strategic plan, and all the other supporting plans that exist within the community. The vision of the community is pretty clear to me, but it's also, there's also a clear reference here for exceptional services and amenities. And again, I think that just, to my mind, to our mind as a team, I hope that drives us to something to say, we're, we're not okay with mediocre. This is a community of excellence, and we want to make sure that we continue to reflect that in our conversations this afternoon. So finally, and I, again, I won't spend much longer on this, I promise, but the guiding principles of the organization, to my mind, are actually the most helpful. That's where the translation of mission and vision becomes really a how-to guide on decision-making. They ground the strategy, the design and delivery of services, and serve as a lens through which to evaluate all of our decisions. And they support the development of a culture where everyone, council, staff, and residents, understand what's most important. These are things that we've agreed to. They're no longer flexible, they're no longer for negotiation. So therefore, they serve as an appropriate benchmark. When we need to make a tough call, we need to be able to look back to this and say, are we being respectful of these principles that the community has agreed to? So taking time on these topics, taken, again, directly from our community strat plan, because, again, when the solutions are obvious or choices are clear, it might be less relevant or important. But when times are tricky, or when you have challenging choices before you, using mission, vision, and guiding principles can be really, really helpful and important. So I, I would encourage us to, if necessary, and as our conversations evolve, just flip back to those pages, and, and we can bring them back up on screen if helpful too, and just use them as a barometer for, for our decision-making. But that's all the soft stuff, right? We really do need to talk about the budget. So we also wanted to be very upfront with you about what we see for two thousand and twenty six. We'll, again, spend some time on the five-year capital plan, but we wanted to eliminate any suspense that you might be feeling, or, or your need to be flipping through your budget documents and attempt to decipher exactly where this is all landing. But the bottom line is first, and you'll note, again, our inclusion of only confirmed third-party funding, federal or provincial. So, again, that's deliberate on our part. Throughout our presentation and the budget documents, we're not making any assumptions about potential funding sources, and that allows you to consider these things pretty cleanly, and asks you to later consider, would we want to proceed with these items even if we don't get federal or provincial support? That's going to be the key question for us. And frankly, and we'll talk about this later, but the options for deferral of some of these expenses, most of these expenses are very limited. There is very few elective items that you see, that you'll see on our list today. The vast majority are replacement of our existing assets, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But the bottom line is the bottom line. We're projecting a, with your approval, and certainly subject to discussion this afternoon, but the net general capital expense in two thousand and twenty six of seventeen million five fifty-one zero eighty-one, and net two thousand and twenty six utility capital expenses of four point five million. So, as I alluded to a little earlier, it's important for us to first be sure that you're comfortable with the proposed expenses that we're showing over the next five years. Mainly for the content of the items themselves, obviously, we want to make sure that you're, you see those expense items, and that you're comfortable with the, the placeholders and estimates that we're showing over that next five-year period. But also because these items drive the calculation for the capital reserves under the current policy. So want to make sure that, that, again, you're comfortable with these amounts. Then we consider how best to finance it. And so, oh, sorry. So, so you'll see that there's three big chunks that, I know, caught my attention when I first saw this chart, and I wouldn't mind digging down into those a little bit more with you. General capital in two thousand and twenty six and in two thousand and twenty seven, and utility capital in two thousand and twenty seven. Those are the big numbers that you see in that chart before you today. And there's also a previous large allocation for two thousand and twenty nine of twenty million dollars that we're no longer showing, and I'd like to talk to, with you a little bit about that today and garner some conversation around that. You'll notice a change in the format of the capital budget documents that we shared with you, though, and that we're wanting to clarify which items are capital renewal versus what is net new or additional. And the province has some definitions around which, what qualifies for what in that regard, and we've applied those definitions to our documents so that we're all consistent. It also allows us to highlight our challenges to the province in a way that's familiar to them, like we're using their terminology, their definitions, so we don't have to cross-reference or jiggle things around. It's all quite clear. But in short, capital renewal refers to replacement of existing assets with similar or upgraded ones, except buildings and major renovations, while additional are all net new items. And so we've classified all of the budget asks for, on the capital side, for two thousand and twenty six and beyond, in that way, sorry, for two thousand and twenty six in that way. And you'll see that, with that classification done, it, it is important to note, in my mind, that in all but one of the next five years, the vast majority, three-quarters or more or so, of our projected required spend is on capital renewal. It's not on newer additional items. So this is absolutely consistent with what we know to be true in Quispam sis. Things are getting a little older, coupled with the levels of service that we've agreed to in mission, vision, and guiding principles, and also aligns with the asset management work that has been done to date, that indicates we have an increasing need to invest in the management of our existing assets in order to maintain the levels of service that our residents have come to enjoy and reasonably expect of us. So, we'll talk more in detail again about two thousand and twenty six, but this is the first slide of our look at the next five years, this five-year glimpse, starting with corporate services. Now, I'll be fair, in fairness, I call it corporate services, everybody else around here calls it general government, but I'll get over myself on that one. To my mind, corporate services is just a little more reflective of the fact that these are services or supports for the core operation, and that therefore corporate services terminology kind of fits versus a more generic general government term, but never mind. Regardless, as the name implies, the large, the area is largely service-driven. So capital expense in this area is significantly less than in other areas. And in fairness, I would say that buildings and equipment has typically been with Dana's team in the, on the facility side, and there's no intent here to suggest that there's a change in organizational structure to, to move the buildings and equipment over to corporate services. That's not the intent, just to, it's probably something that we can rejig in terms of classification of X time. But all to say that, we'll talk more about two thousand and twenty six for sure. Overall, I don't think this, from a five-year planning perspective, is an area of particular concern for council. The numbers here are relatively modest, although I do need to acknowledge there may be some additional IT capital assets added to the list for future years as a result of the work currently underway with Perry Consulting. So, that said, for two thousand and twenty six, you see an allocation of forty-four nine, four-four-nine-five-hundred, and in two thousand and twenty-seven, four-hundred-thousand. Again, we'll talk more about two thousand and twenty-six in a little bit. For community services over the five-year plan, for two thousand and twenty-seven, I'm sure you noticed a two-point-four-million-dollar capital renewal expense. That's in the recreation line. It relates to the Gondola Point Beach and the Arts and Culture Park upgrades, and, and it lines up timing-wise with the Hampton Road work. So you see that two-point-four-million-dollar recommendation there in two thousand and twenty-seven. In two thousand and twenty-eight, you also see an additional proposed spend of just over two million dollars, and that's for Hammond River Park, next phase of development there, as well as the Walter Jewett Building and field lighting upgrades at that site. And finally, in two thousand and twenty-nine, you see a one-point-three-two-five million, sorry, one-point-three-two-five-million-dollar proposed expense. And as for the new Hampton Road Field, Phase One of that work, and again, all of these being in future years, but certainly aligning with the Recreation Master Plan. These are not new items, these are not items that you've not seen before in previous five-year capital planning, and they do align with the Recreation Master Plan, all time to align with other projects and all things you've seen before. And frankly, all significantly less than major capital requirements that you'll see in other areas. One thing you do not see, though, and one piece that I wanted to highlight for you this afternoon, is you do not see a previously noted twenty-million-dollar planned expense for two thousand and twenty-nine. In other words, it's not in there, and it had been in the past. It was in previous year's submissions, but we are recommending deferral. It was for an additional ice surface at the Qplex. So a couple of things about that. First, it's important to note that that was never planned to be a third ice surface for the town of Quispam sis. The Recreation Master Plan does not call for that, but rather recognizes that there needs to be a planned decommissioning of the QMA in a way that would allow further development of the Qplex as a leading destination for both local and major national events. So this is planned additional ice surface at the Qplex to allow for decommissioning of the QMA. That's why it was there. So second, though, is that we have significant reservations that twenty million dollars is actually enough to add a ice surface at the Qplex. Not only for the Qplex itself, but for the site implications that would affect tennis courts in the area, the Parks Building, as that expansion work at the Qplex goes, it has a bearing on those two, those two functions as well. So what we've done is included design work for an additional ice surface at the Qplex in two thousand and twenty-six for that expansion, so that we can have a better understanding of what the total cost would be, both for that facility, as well as for the implications on parks. And then we can be ready for construction when council is, is comfortable proceeding. And third, we do have pressing needs for capital investment, as I'm sure you've seen in other areas, and barring unforeseen issues beyond usual asset management at the QMA that the Community Services Team is well, well on to already, we believe that we can reasonably extend the life of the QMA till at least two thousand and thirty-one and thirty-two. So for all of those reasons that, that I was just cited, the thought is to defer the twenty-million-dollar capital expense for the Qplex until beyond the two thousand and thirty planning period. That's community services. Moving to transportation services, this is one area where we are in urgent need of capital investment, and an area that I, I think you'll see has, is largely offset the, the twenty-million-dollar removal in, or deferral, because we have some urgent needs here. Specifically, you'll note a five-million-dollar proposed expense in two thousand and twenty-six, and additional twelve million dollars in two thousand and twenty-seven. Both are related to the works facility. They do show as additional or net new because of the definitions, again, used by the province, in that buildings and building, major building renovations count as net new, not as, as replacement or capital renewal. But let's be clear, we're, we're talking about replacing the facility. We're not talking about a ne, a new, a second works facility. So, as you know, and in alignment with your earlier direction and approval, we, we've been working with engineering consultants who specialize in this work, and kudos to Gary and team for leading that, that relationship, making sure that the design of a municipal facility, works facility is safe, it's appropriately scaled, and allows for efficient workflows. And Gary had sent the draft facility condition assessment report for your review prior to this afternoon session, and I hope you've had time to take a quick look at that, but I would say that, in short, we have none of those things now. It's not safe, it's not appropriately scaled, and it's not an efficient workflow in there. Further, there's some opportunities that will help us offset our need for ongoing work at Town Hall by allowing for some of our Town Hall staff to move into a facility at the work site if by allowing for some of our Town Hall staff to move into a facility at the Works Site if, if work proceeds. So Gary will speak to this overall Works Facility, beginning with the five-million-dollar requested for 2026. We need to dive deeper into the 2026 year and recognizing that there's a spillover into 2027. I'm sure Gary would have no reservation to talk about that twelve-million dollars as well. And finally, we'll get near the, near the end here. For the five-year capital plan is you'll see here Hampton Road work is occupying the vast majority of 2026. And then after that, it's really a steady-state recommended investment of approximately five million dollars per year, all showing as capital renewal on roads and streets. And I'll be honest, deferral here is challenging. Notwithstanding the Hampton Road conversation and decision, which I'm sure will form part of our conversation this afternoon, but without upkeep, all of the roads on the list will end up falling below the expected pavement ratings for renewal. And you know, this is not a, this is not an arbitrary process. It's a numerical evidence-based one where we have our summer students largely completing the numerical assessments of road surfaces over the summer months and recognizing that there's an average rating that we're trying to maintain in the town. Deferring that work to future years only makes that problem worse. And it becomes very difficult to catch up after you're, you're behind. So deferring on that steady state of five million or so would not be something that we would recommend, although we certainly recognize that the 2026 proposed expense of twelve-three is significant and worthy of further discussion, which we'll get to when we're talking specifically about 2026. And then finally, on the five-year capital plan, the utility piece. Again, Gary will speak to 2026 in some detail because you do see a water system expense there for sure that is worthy of discussion, largely Hampton Road. But if we race ahead to 2027, you'll also see a fifteen-million-dollar proposed spend there. And that's a recognition that our Longwood Waste Treatment Facility is nearing capacity, and we're going to need to act on that sooner rather than later. In accordance with council's previous direction and approval, we're currently working with consulting engineers that are specialized in this area to explore the feasibility of what options we have. They may absolutely not all require a fifteen-million-dollar spend, but to reflect our current previous comment that we're providing you a, kind of a worst-case scenario capital requirement budget, we need to cite that this vulnerability exists. But there are certainly options available. One includes enhancement of our existing Longwood Site. Second includes construction of a wastewater treatment facility of our own. Or third, partnering with Rossi and, and have them help us with wastewater management. And those three options could easily come with very different financing options as well. So I, I'm a little reluctant to have a fifteen-million-dollar show, expense show exclusively on 2027 because the options are many with respect to financing. But yet, that vulnerability does exist, and action will need to be taken in 2027 in order to address our vulnerability there. In 2028, you'll see an amount, a proposed spend of one-point-five-million dollars of additional. That's well-field exploration on the other side of the arterial. And in 2029, there's an amount there of two-point-four-five additional. That's the sewer crossing of Route One. That's been a consideration requested by the province where that sewer line currently exists within a culvert. And then in 2030, a new water tower and further water expansion along Cedar Ridge and along Millennium. So there's a whirlwind tour of the next five years. And again, recognizing that our main focus this afternoon will be on 2026, and we'll get there for sure. But if there is opportunity for discussion that is important to you now with respect particularly 27, 28, 29, or 2030, this might be a good time, Your Worship, to invite that conversation. I'd certainly turn it back to you and invite further conversation that either myself or, or staff can help, help address.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I will open the floor now for anyone who would like to comment on what you have just heard and what you have read over the past week in your package. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship. Just for clarification, Gary's going to come up and Dana's going to come up to discuss as well because I don't, I don't want to start asking questions now that are going to be answered. That's, that's what I'm.
They are going to give their presentations and then they will, from their seats, so they're not going.
No, no, that's, that's what I, but I don't want to ask questions now that could be answered later.
So the overview that you've just received, if that plants some seeds in your mind as far as what is going to be discussed for the 2026 budget, we will move forward and we can continue on if that is the preference. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, Worship. The only big one that I, I think we might discuss now is the deferral of the Qplex, that twenty million dollars that's been taken out. Since I've been on council, we're going on five years now, that money was always there. And so now it's taken out. I'm just wondering if that money has been used, the twenty million, has been used in other areas? Or was that twenty million totally taken out of all the scenarios?
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you Deputy Mayor for the question. Certainly came up at our Finance Committee meeting as well. And the, the, the short answer is no, we didn't take the twenty-million-dollar and then spread it evenly or otherwise across other areas. What we're doing is trying to take an empirical approach to the overall capital spend requirement and only show things that are required. So no, we did not split the twenty-million dollars that was previously allocated to the Qplex to other areas within the 26 to 2030 planning period. What you see for 26 to 2030 is our, is our independent opinion about our required expenses in that period without considering the twenty-million dollars that was previously allocated to the Qplex, other than considering the total spend that that represents.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, please.
Yes, thank you, Worship. But yeah, I guess I do, I just want to make a statement, not on the question, but something that we all have to also remember when we're looking at this. So as of 2026 up to 2028 and 2029, the Regional Service Commission, if nothing changes, will be spending an extra million dollars a year based on Harbor Station, Aquatic Center, and everything else. So I know we've talked about things may change, but right now they're not changing. It's legislated, so that extra million dollars has to come from somewhere. So you're either going to have to increase everybody's taxes, or you're going to have to be careful of what we do. So as of today, that's in the plans for 2026, 2027, 2028. We're paying for Harbor Station roof of seven million dollars. We get to pay for it. We're paying for all these things that are being legislated, and nothing's changed. So until that changes, like even Enterprise St. John went up two-hundred-thousand dollars this year for us that we have to pay. So until that legislation changes, the Quispampsis taxpayer is going to be paying that. Good news for us is our Qplex debt is paid off next year. That's seven-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars. Our loan that was, we got for the Qplex is paid off in 2027. That's two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand dollars. So we do have a bit of things coming off, but we've got major things coming on. We've got the, the Works Department, we've got water. So that being said, people need to be cognizant of what's currently legislated, which we have to budget for until we know otherwise. So maybe the new council in 2026 may make a different decision. But it's, it's also one that we've got to look at. And after we go through this, we haven't seen the operating plan. We still may have further discussions because we're going to have to look at financing debt, what gets paid and what, what's going to happen. So I just want to make that comment about the regional service because of facilities. Until that changes, and if the mandate gets more, they're doing health and everything else, we pay for it. So most people probably see me on our, our other meetings, not a big fan of it. But right now it's legislated, so we got to plan for it. So, and that's huge in facilities for the Q, for, that's costing us from Harbor Station, Trade Convention, Aquatic Center. And they don't know how they're going to put in a, a new warm-up pool and three-hundred seats that we're going to have to pay for that, too. So until that changes, we got to be cognizant of it because it will affect what we can spend here, or unless you want to pay fifteen percent more in your taxes. So that's, that'll be the discussion. So thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And as a past chair and a board member of the Regional Service Commission, I, I will say that you're absolutely correct. It is a legislative mandate through the New Brunswick government that we share in the costs of capital and operations for the five facilities in St. John. However, it was with the past government that we did not get any leverage or any, anyone listening to us when we didn't want, and you may laugh at that, Counselor Miller. Well, we've only been paying capital for three years. And in that time, it's been under the rule of the former government. I have, I'm, I'm hoping, like you are, that, that that will change in the coming year. It's not going to change for 2026, admittedly, but we just have a new government. They have not been in, sworn in yet for a year, and that does take time to change legislation. So it is something that we've been told will come in the future. We've asked for it to be done in 2026. So I, I, that's all that I can give you as far as that is concerned. But I do trust that that will come down the road. And hopefully, if it's not there for the 2027 budget, then I think we'll, we'll have something to say at that point once again. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor Miller, for bringing that up. I, I just, for, for budget, for the paper we're looking at. So the, the capital cost for the regional facilities, where does that appear in this budget that we're looking at today?
Mr. Watson.
Thank you for the question and through you, Your Worship. The FRSE payments show as operating expense for us. So how they split that is, they split that between their operating and their capital, but it shows as an operating expense for us. So we will see that in our operating conversation for sure. And if it's helpful, we could certainly highlight the difference because appropriately so. Our residents, I expect, have an interest in this area, so we can certainly highlight that in our discussion of operating. So in short, it does not appear today because it's not a capital expense for the town of Quispampsis.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Locke, please.
Thank you, Worship, through you to Mr. Watson. I just wanted clarity on the Qplex expansion. So I know that we took the money out, and I think you had mentioned that we're still putting some money in for an assessment for it. So it doesn't mean it's off the table, it's just that we don't really know how much we have to budget, so we've just taken it out for now. But it's still planned to eventually, because I think you mentioned the QMA, you know, it's expect, you know, the lifespan is still limited. So is that the case? If you can just expand on that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Locke. Mr. Watson, please.
Yes, thank you for the question and through you, Your Worship, Counselor Locke and others. Yes, the intent is absolutely, remains to add an additional ice surface at the Qplex. What we don't know yet is a firm construction estimate. We have early indications that the twenty-million dollars that was previously allocated is not sufficient to address both that site and the consequence on Parks Building and tennis courts. So the intention is for us to invest a smaller amount in 2026 for the purposes of the design of the Qplex work, so we can get those estimates in there. And that in future years, likely 31, 32, you would see an updated estimate for the Qplex. And in the meantime, we continue asset management at the QMA and maintain that ice surface as well.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Worship. No, I think the CAO just answered the question I was going to ask about. I mean, I guess it's probably pretty obvious, but the conversion of the QMA to a field house facility, that sort of thing, would be in lockstep with whatever happens on the twinning of the Qplex, I presume. So they're kind of one project in the same, as it were, eh?
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Mr. Watson, please.
Yep, thank you, Your Worship, and through you to Counselor Bigger. Yes, the decommissioning of the QMA is the planned outcome of having put the additional ice surface at the Qplex. Recognizing it's still an amazing facility today, it can continue to perform well thanks to the dedicated staff that we have working there. There, there's no reason to believe that the QMA can't continue, barring any unforeseen problem, that we can continue with proper asset management, keep it going until we're able to add that second ice surface at the Qplex, which then, to your point, in alignment with Recreation Master Plan, allows decommissioning of the QMA and turning it into another alternate-use facility.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship. I wasn't going to ask about it, but now we're, we're on that topic. I, I guess maybe a suggestion is, so for the three, four of us, including the mayor that were here when we did do the QMA, we had asked the question, says, before we put three-million dollars in the QMA, are we ever going to do the Qplex? And we were told no. Right? So that's why, at that time, we made the decision to put the money in the QMA. So if you do want to look at a third ice surface, I mean, we have a different discussion, too. Rossi still has one, and we talked about KV minor hockey. Does it go back to Quispampsis hockey to find out? Because we're funding everybody from Kingston to Hampton that are in hockey, basically. So that, that's fine. I, I've been through that thing. But my question is, instead of putting a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars into seeing whether it's going to cost twenty-five-million dollars to, to twin the Q, Qplex, because we got to remove a whole power grid, I was told, that's three-quarters of a million dollars. We lose the tennis courts, we lose a few other things, et cetera, et cetera. Why don't we look at if we need another rink, what do we do? What's the best option? Do you, do you take the field that's in by the QMA and put another rink of the sort that you can build for five or six million dollars and have a walkway in between that it all works well? That you got, that's up there versus spending twenty-five-million dollars for, to, to take away stuff that we already have than to have to redo that versus do it somewhere that you still have a third rink if need, if need be? Or is this something that you start talking with the regional facilities? If you, or, or maybe, I'll talk about this later on, but maybe Rossi and Quispampsis just amalgamate, that'd make life easier. But would, when you're spending a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, should it be specific to the Q, Qplex? Or should it be, if we were to have another rink here, what's the best spot for it? Because that study would, to me, would be more important than just saying, we definitely want to have it in the Qplex, we definitely want to do it here, but why not beside the QMA? Why not different places? So that's kind of my thought on that because, one, I know things have changed, but we were told, no, we don't, we're never going to do it. That's why we, we spent all that money on the QMA. Council's changed, got that. But it's, I don't think, we know it's going to be a lot more, we got to do a lot of different things. So it's, if you're looking for another rink, we don't need to have, I know the, the, the original plan was supposed to be a twin, and then Rossi didn't pay into it, and that's why we are where we are. But it, should it just be for where is the best spot for a rink if we need one versus to spend what it's going to cost to do the Qplex? So that's just a comment on that.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And I don't, I don't think it was the appetite to have three ice surfaces in Quispampsis. I have looked up studies and two are certainly plenty according to the population of our community. But we are feeding, you know. Yeah, but I'm just saying that it, three rinks, three ice surfaces, we're not on the radar at any time. And putting a rink at the QMA would sort of negate that, so. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Worship, and thanks, Counselor Miller, for the question. I get it. I think fair to say a couple of things. One would be, from the purposes of overall planning of these facilities, that we're, what we're doing is, is in alignment with Recreation Master Plan. So there's, the, the potential here has been reviewed, is my understanding, and we certainly want to adhere to the Recreation Master Plan unless we decide as a council together that that's what you wish to have happen, something different. That said, from a budgeting perspective for next year, leaving an allocation there to allow for this design work to be, to be contemplated. I think from a, from a budgeting perspective, I think it's important to leave something there. And to your point, it could explore just re-verifying where we've been with Recreation Master Plan, make sure this is the right place to be investing detailed construction planning into, or some other site. But I think from a budget, capital budget perspective, leaving an allocation there in 2026 is important.
Thank you, Counselor Locke, please.
Thank you, Worship, through you to Mr. Watson. It's, I guess, along the same lines, I guess a lot of us have a lot of questions about the Qplex. The, I've never seen the plans for the potential expansion. I just know that, again, I was under the impression because we've built tennis courts and, and different things that it would never actually happen. I'm just wondering, in light of us spending or planning on spending millions to revamp the area across the arterial for engineering and works, I'm not sure in terms of like the feasibility, or are they going to be looking at even like the Parks Facility in that area? And could, you know, again, before we spend a bunch of money in planning on engineering, like could we consolidate those to create, like free up space? I'm just wondering in terms of, you know, we're, we're planning on doing something across the arterial before we kind of know what our needs are if we do want to double the Qplex space. And it sounds like the Parks Building is also potentially going to be affected in the future if we do do that. So I'm just wondering if we're thinking ahead when we're looking at the expansion of the other building for engineering and works. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Locke. Mr. Watson, please.
Thank you, Worship. And yeah, it's a good question. I think it speaks again to our opportunity here to revisit the overall site planning of our services because there are a number of options available to the town. But what we don't know yet is what's the scope and scale of the, of those options. So we do need to make a budget allocation in 2026 to allow for that planning to happen. As it stands today, if we were to adhere to the recommendations of the Recreation Master Plan, we would consider detailed planning for an additional ice surface at the Qplex, which would allow for decommissioning of the QMA. The additional ice surface at the Qplex would have an impact on the Parks Building. So at the very least, Parks would need to relocate to another site. It could arguably be on the QMA site at the back or in some portion of the QMA site, but need not be. So, you know, I think these are variables that are exactly the reason why we need to do some more detailed planning. We need a budget allocation in order to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Deputy Mayor Skryer first, please.
Thank you, your worship. I, I just wanted to say that I'm in agreement in having a placeholder so that we can do some more planning. And, and to be fair, some of us were not around the council table when the decision was made that it would be a twinning of an ice surface, because there's lots of other ideas we could use with that site as well. You know, a, a cover over the pool versus, you know, a new ice surface. There's all sorts of imagining the vision of what it could look like for all of us. So, I would just like to keep the placeholder there and then have this discussion with the master plan, with our Director of Community Services, so we know exactly that we're staying in, in align with the strategic plan. But maybe opening things up a little bit more than what it's been the last five years. This is the way it was planned, you got to stick to the plan. Well, maybe we, a plan should be agile enough that we can move according to what's happening in our community at the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to go to Councilor Olson first. Some people have already spoken a couple of times. Councilor Olson, please.
Yes, just talking about the Qplex and the QMA. The Qplex was designed to be twinned, similar to the Williary Center in, in Fredericton. And it's the exact same type of design. The, the addition has had all the utilities prepared and added to the outside wall of the Q, of the Qplex. So, it's a matter of accessing those utilities that have already been designed and the operation of the Qplex. And that it would, it, it could be operated from there. But the investment has already been made in that location. And what I'm, what I'm questioning though is just if and when that would happen. Because I don't want to, I don't really support us providing facilities for everybody in Southern New Brunswick. You know, and, and that driving expenditures in our, in our basement, it's not covered by other people and that. So, I think that the, starting with the, with the brand-new building or something like that in another location, we're losing all of that investment that's already been made in the Qplex. So, that's something to think about.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. Councilor Locke, please.
Thank you, your worship, again, just to follow up through you to Mr. Watson. I just wanted clarity, because I guess there is, Mr. Loise presented with us some background detail that's going to cost significant investment to improve the Works Facilities. And I, I guess, knowing that it's probably not if, but when we're doubling the Qplex and it will affect the facilities that Parks is in now, I'm just wondering, is there flexibility or time to look at? Like, I just wouldn't want to improve that facility and then go, whoops, I guess we should have added some extra space, because now we want the Parks to go there as well. So, I just don't know if that's been considered, or is that, do we have flexibility in looking at that before things are, you know, shovels are in the ground and things are starting to be modified? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Locke. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks for the follow-up, Councilor Locke. Our initial assessment, and Mr. Loise can definitely speak to our overall need for the Works Site Campus, if you want to call it that, for the rebuild. It does not currently seem to allow for co-location of it also, including the Parks Facilities and their, their workflows. But that said, it's not something that we couldn't take a one last look at, to be sure, because your point's well taken. Parks deserves a facility, and they need to be located on a campus that works for them as well. And if the Qplex is twinned, there is an impact on that, on them. So, being mindful of the possibilities. We've already taken a first look at that. It doesn't look feasible, but we can certainly take a second look as part of the planning process.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship, through you to, I guess, Director of Recreation. When, we're looking at $175,000 to see what the effect would be, but as Councilor Olson had just pointed out, we'd already planned to twin it. So, we would know where the footprint would be and what would happen. So, would it really cost $175 to figure out what the issues would be? Because if we've already got everything in there ready to go, so to speak, and we've got the original plans to see what it was, you're just really looking at, I, I mean, I'm simplifying it, but to me, if you know where the box is and you know what's got to be removed, I don't know why we would have to pay $175,000 to get an answer like that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Where are we going? Ms. Perton-Dixon.
Thank you, your worship. We actually had a walk-through of the facility already with the staff and the CEO, as well, with our consultant, Murdock and Boyd, that designed the building. Because, as you know, it's 15 years old now, so we had to go back with our architects and have a refresh, but also include mechanical and electrical and have a look at what, what would be involved in twinning that. So, we do have a, a cost estimate, a, a new one, actually, within the last month or so. And it's $110,000 plus taxes. And that's to come up with the initial concepts and designs for the, for twinning the Qplex. But the extra funding is to look at the QMA as well as the Parks Building. So, we have, and I'm stealing a little bit of my own thunder here for my first budget item, but since we're on the topic, we'll, we'll go there. But we have an, an assessment planned this fall for the mechanical, the structural, and electrical of the Parks Building and the QMA to have a look at those buildings and the Qplex and to have a look at those buildings. So, we're doing that assessment this fall. And then, next year, when we have, when we have those assessments and we can start the initial designs and concepts, we can start building what that project will look like and the impacts to those other two buildings. If you'll remember, the Qplex from concept to opening was six years. So, we need to start this now in order to be ready. And in the Recreation Master Plan of 2023, it recommended $175,000 to do this work. And so, that's why we, we thought we'd refresh the quote and then again, look at the residual impact to the, to the other two buildings, because we need to have a look at the QMA. In that Recreation Master Plan, it said that we had 10 years left at the QMA. So, it's down to eight years and that we've got investments that we need to make to get there. And also of note in the Recreation Master Plan is that, as previously mentioned, based on population, for what our population is now and up to, looked up to 2031, we are meeting the needs of the community with the two ice surfaces. So, there is a lot of synergy in following the, through with the twinning of that building in that location. You'll notice the tennis courts will need to be at that, when we get to that point, they'll need to be rebuilt or refurbished. The Parks Building is from the 1970s, apparently was built by volunteers. So, those, those two facilities will be near their end of life at that point regardless.
Thank you, Ms. Perton-Dixon. Deputy Mayor Skryer.
Thank you, your worship. My question's not about the Qplex. My question is, though, about transportation services. And just, I would like to suggest that council consider moving the Gondola Point Road up till next year. It's not slated till 2027. It's been, I, I've received information, well, that's where we put it and that's where it's supposed to be. Well, I think that, again, when I talk about plans being agile and being able to move when we need to, we've done surveys, we've done open houses, great response. And then, to let it sit for a year before we even start to consider the plan again, so now we're into 2028 before we'd even get into construction, I think that it warrants consideration of this council that it be moved into the 2026. Maybe not the whole amount that is scheduled for 2027, but a, a portion of that, that we would be able to start commencing with what it's going to look like, get some schematics done, whatever we need to do to, and maybe a part of the road is done. That pumping station from Quispamstes Road down to the, to roundabout is completed. And now, the plan might say, who knows what the plan may come up with, what they see as active transportation. But I would strongly advise, would like to see that that be moved into the 2026 so at least we could start something, so that the next council coming in say, sees that the plan is already in place, that the initial consultations have been done, the public has been consulted and surveys have been done. So, that would be my ask going forward when we look at the transportation services. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Skryer. And I was glad to hear that you did bring up, Ms. Perton-Dixon, about the aging infrastructure, because I believe the Qplex was started around 2005. And so, that, that infrastructure gets placed in the ground for a great deal of, of what went on there. We know that there were some hiccups after we did open in 2011. And now, knowing that that infrastructure is 14 years old that we are working with, but the stuff below the ground could be as much as 20 years old. So, that's something that we have to consider as we move forward, knowing that that's probably much easier to deal with than twinning that at this point in time. The Gondola Point Beach, or the Gondola Point Road, the beach parking, I think we need to collect the information as we did last night at the open house. We need to get the consultants to look at that and see what is practical as we move forward. If we were to pave from the Quispam Road to the parking lot and then continue finishing the road at another point, we may be using a road if we decided to open the, the Gondola Point Road onto the 119 at the ferryboat for a right-hand turn. And we may be driving over that with trucks and so forth before it is, before we should actually be paving that. So, I, and I, I do feel that when we rush things, that sometimes they don't get done properly. And I really feel strongly that this has been and was said to be a seven or eight-year project. And I do rely on the experts to, to direct us in that. So, I'm, keep the road in good state or, or at this point in time. We need to make sure that we've got the full picture and not go in haphazardly and start doing this portion here or that portion there. We need to have a continuum of what this plan, what the vision looks like. Because as I said, if we start working on one end of it and in the coming year, that could cause a lot of challenges for the future. Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. Talking about the Gondola Point Beach area, I think that we should look seriously and investigate the one-way entrance onto the 119 from the discharge of the, from the discharge of the ferry. Because that way there, it would relieve a lot of traffic from the end along the Gondola Point Road. And it would allow them to go one way across that parking lot, existing parking lot, and then feather into the discharge off of the ferry road. It wouldn't allow two-way traffic, but just one way. And that happens often around the province. It's not, we're, we're not, you know, designing something new, but it would be new to our traffic flow. And I think it's, I think it's important that it would relieve the congestion at times at the, that end of the dead end on the Gondola Point Road. So, I think that's got to be incorporated in the overall design and thought process along that end.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. And, and I know that was brought up, and it's, it's something that will, as I say, go with all of the information that was collected at the open house and online in the, in the survey that was done. And, and that will be presented at a, at another time. Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
Yes, your worship, thank you. Just on that, I just want to emphasize again, the reason I want the capital dollars there is, again, we were still working through getting our plan together. I respect that. I, you know, that we've had surveys and the public, and there's an expectation. And we talk about our exceptional service and meeting the expectation of our residents. We have now developed an expectation that something will move forward. So, I don't want to rush it. I want the plan to be what it should be and take our time getting the plan. But if we have an opportunity, and, I mean, construction on our roads this year didn't start till September, October. So, if we have opportunity next year in September to start moving the plan forward, then I would like to see something move forward. But if we don't allocate any dollars to it, which has, it stands right now, there's no, no possibility for that plan to move forward at all until 2027. That's my, my final word on that one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Skryer. And, and that's when the money was allocated for, was to have a, an off year and then have the allocation for 2027. So, at this point in time, I'm going to ask our Director of. We had it set for 2:30, but yes, we can do that. Okay. We will take a break now, Tim, if that, if you're able to set that. And turn the mics off, please. We will take a break now, Tim, if that, if you're able to set that and turn the mics off, please. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome back to this session of Budget Deliberations for Capital Costs for the Town of Quispam Sis for 2026. I will turn the mic over to our administrative officer, Mr. Ian Watson.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to the rest of council as well. Thank you for the conversation around our five-year capital plan. I recognize there's been a good discussion there and a couple of questions that we can definitely come back and follow up on before we end our afternoon today. But we had said too, that it was clearly important for us to take a deeper dive into 2026, and that's our intention for the rest of the afternoon session. So you'll hear from me for a very short time, and I'm sure you're all thinking that that it's time for you to stop talking, for others to start. So you'll need to put up with me for a quick conversation on our budget recommendations for 2026 and corporate services. And then turn it to Dana, Ms. Burton Dixon, for community services, and then to Mr. Lozey for engineering works and utilities. And then certainly, again, as before, invite conversation and discussion around what you're comfortable with, knowing the intention here is to leave the afternoon with a clear sense that, yes, you are comfortable or not, and what adjustments are required for the 2026 capital assumptions before we bring this all together for, at the end of the month, with operating budget assumptions and then resulting implications on tax rate and borrowing requirements. So in the corporate services world, or general government if you must, we are making a recommendation for just under $450,000, 100% of which is considered capital renewal. In other words, we're not suggesting that we acquire anything new here that is not replacement of an existing asset or an upgrade of an existing asset. You do see $350,000, this is broken down into a $350,000 recommended upgrade at Town Hall. And that's to reflect of council's earlier conversation and direction around communication around the horseshoe largely, to respect the notion that councillors had an interest in being able to see one another a little better, change the layout here a little bit in recognition of the communication needs during council meetings, also to accommodate staff appropriately at the table or around the horseshoe or in some other format, while also respecting a gallery of spectators that may have interest in being in the facility at any one time. And in combination with that, there's a recognition that the front lobby and washrooms have not been refreshed in this building since the building was first commissioned, and therefore a modest refresh. And when I say that, I mean removing the bubble letters and replacing them with something else. I mean paint on the walls. I mean upgraded dividers in the washrooms, but not a full washroom rebuild. These are, these are considered modest enhancements or modest capital, capital asset management pieces that are felt to be important for the town's ongoing maintenance. I will say that we have had conversations with consulting engineers with respect to this work. And they came back with an estimate that was actually double this. Staff is saying that they're not comfortable with that. We do not foresee the need for a $700,000 investment in this area of this building, but rather a $350,000 would look after, again, the configuration of the, of the horseshoe itself, accommodating staff, refinishing of flooring here, as well as bathroom and front lobby updates. So that's the 350 that's proposed there. The second item on the line is a building security review worth $25,000. I recognize that's a modest amount, but yet is considered a capital expense by virtue of its impact on capital assets. We do have a need to better understand our overall security profile with respect to all facilities. And that's not just cameras, but also access control and, and the like, so that we have intrusion alarms and alarming systems that are appropriately scaled and designed. And again, not just for facilities or, or major buildings, but also our utility, our utility assets as well. Because there has been interest and there is other jurisdictions and guiding documentation around the security of water assets in particular that is gaining attention in terms of the need to make sure that those facilities are secure and surveyed. So recognizing that that could represent a large or small expense in the end, we want to make sure that we do a comprehensive security review of, of all of our buildings, including the utility assets, so that we have good guidance for 2027 in terms of what is required. The third item on the list is just, again, a relatively modest investment, but one that is important. There is a number of security surveillance cameras that do require a replacement. This is to ensure our alignment with a federal government decision. Incidentally, not a direction to provinces or municipalities by the federal government, but rather a decision by the federal government to eliminate the particular brand of cameras that has opposed a particulars, a potential security concern. We have, we have completed, asked for and had received a security assessment with respect to that vulnerability. The risk to Quispam Sis is very low because our, these cameras are not connected to a network of any kind. They're not connected to our, our work network. They're not connected to the vendor's cloud-based service. They're not connected to the vendor's DVR-based service. But yet, they're also, by virtue of the federal government's decision, not a camera that's well-supported. So it's very difficult for us to, to ensure ongoing surveillance when we can't replace parts on these devices or replace them with like-for-like. So the intention here is to replace those cameras, knowing that even with a security review complete, we will need surveillance cameras. So regardless of the outcome of the security review, the thinking is that even if we replace these, we'll definitely need cameras and, and the $40,000 investment would look after that. And then finally, and I am sure our Director of HR would be disappointed if we were not able to, if I didn't advocate strongly for our ability to pay our staff. And the ability to pay our staff is reliant heavily on payroll time lock, time clocks. Those are all end-of-life, and they're no longer supported. So that is a one-time replacement on a recurring schedule, but this would be the year to get a replacement of the payroll time clocks. So those are the major items that we're suggesting into the corporate services portfolio. And again, arguably within the building and facilities area as well. So appreciate your patience with me as I creep into that space a little bit with the Town Hall discussion. But I would also add that in collaboration with staff, we have asked staff, and I've asked of myself, what's reasonable to defer, knowing that 2026 is a tight year? And certainly any other major interior renovations at the Town Hall, we are not entertaining this year. We had the conversation with respect to, to staff accommodations and, and the need to refresh or upgrade this facility, but given that it has not had that treatment since, since its commissioning. But it can definitely wait. I mean, this, this facility is fully serviceable. It does not need to be, undergo a heavy-duty renovation for, for sure in 2026. And we can, we can certainly defer any further work on that until next year, at the very least. So with that, that's my bit for corporate services side. And if it's council's wish, I can certainly entertain questions. Or we could go through community services and Gary's section and then cycle back and have questions at the end. It's certainly Your Worship's wish. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. I think, given the time, that we will go directly to the Director of Community Services, and we will reserve questions until her presentation is complete. Thank you. Director of Community Services, Ms. Burton Dixon.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's my pleasure to present to you the 2026 capital budget for the Community Services Department. Our recommendation for 2026 is $1,617,000. 77% of that is capital renewal. The additional items are new items. There's $375,000. The first being in arenas and pools. And as we've already talked about, there's $175,000 in that budget for Qplex drawings for the second ice surface. And again, as is mentioned previously, that's for the initial cost, concepts, excuse me, project cost estimates and the need to consider the residual impact to the QMA and to the Parks Department. This was recommended in the Recreation Master Plan of 2023. We also have a $15,000 genie lift, and that's at the Qplex. So that will allow our staff quicker response to user group needs and provide the ability to complete our maintenance safely and efficiently. Our rentals in the conference center are higher than they've ever been. We have a lot of weddings, tournaments and other special events in there, the love of cheer, et cetera. And they all require pageantry and other items to be installed. So this equipment will allow our staff to be more efficient and safer in their work at that facility and respond to that quicker. The next item is in parks, and that's $185,000 for a new trail at Hammond River Park. That's in the new section, and that aligns with the Hammond River Park Master Plan. We also have in capital renewal, $1,242,000. And then in that, in arenas and pools, the largest item would be a $300,000 pool liner. So the pool liner is at the end of its useful life. They last usually between 10 and 15 years. So we've maximized the life of that liner by annual maintenance and repair of the liner. Sometimes there's been leaks that have occurred while the pool is full with water. So we've had to hire a diver or we've had to have our staff make adjustments during the season. And sometimes those haven't been complete, so the water continues to drain out, which costs us money in the way of water chemicals and pool chemistry is impacted as well. The next item would be at the Qplex as well. As we've mentioned earlier, it's 15 years old now. So there's some capital items, some renewal and asset management that needs to take place. And one of those is the roadway sign. So we have $75,000 budgeted for that sign. The software and hardware are out of date and no longer supported. So if it fails, it cannot be fixed. This would, again, not be the sign, the physical sign itself is the board and the sign and the software and hardware to support that. We also have $150,000 for the rooftop unit. And that unit provides cooling, heating and air filtration to the dressing rooms and hallways. And again, if, as in any good asset management plan, if we have control replacement, this will mitigate impact to our users. So if it were to fail prior to replacement, then we would obviously be a significant impact to the users of that facility. And we have a $15,000 scrubber at the Qplex as well that needs to be replaced, and we use that daily. It's one of our main pieces of equipment used all day, every day. At the QMA, we have $150,000 for a 20-year-old chiller surg drum, which is at the end of its useful life. And we have made a commitment to the Provincial Boiler Inspector, who has directed us to replace that, that this work will take place in 2026. Then the plant can operate, cannot operate without this piece of equipment. We've also made the equipment to the, excuse me, commitment to the Provincial Boiler Inspector. We've also made the equipment to the, excuse me, commitment to the provincial boiler inspector for $60,000 ventilation to help meet the, the refrigeration room meet present-day code. And that's also, again, part of our commitment in 2026 to the provincial boiler inspector. So in capital renewal and our asset management, we have $30,000 for Matthews Cove Bridge Replacement. And this is to widen the bridge to allow for winter grooming. We had work in this area this year, and unfortunately, it's there's more erosion there than we anticipated upstream, and we need to support the lift stations. And we've received a grant from $20,000 from provincial government to help with that. So the next phase of that project will be to rebuild the bridge as part of that project. We also have $30,000 to replace the gator, which is a 2011, and it's also one of our main pieces of equipment and for summer maintenance in parks. And this will be repurposed to the Cuplex as our old, other old one was. And that's used for plowing, waste removal, and building maintenance. We have $25,000 in the Arts and Culture Park, so our plan is to review the existing park conditions and consulting with mayor, council staff, and the public to create conceptual plans and budgets for 2027. The park, believe it or not, is 20 years old now. The concrete's heaving, furniture and fixtures can no longer be replaced. The ice plant is nearing its end of life. And reimagining this space was recommended as part of our Recreation Master Plan. So if you recall, when we first opened the Arts and Culture Park in 2005, we had the first refrigerated plant in Atlantic Canada. And we were cutting-edge, people were calling and coming to visit us. That's no longer the case. Our neighbors down the road have a beautiful outdoor rink. So we need to have a look at those assets. Do we want to replace them? We want to reimagine the space and see what it can be, and maybe it looks a little bit different, or a lot different than it does now. But we want that, to have that funding to help us in working with yourselves and the public to see what that space will look like in the future. We have $192,000 in the Walter Jewett Field Drainage. So this work entails installing in-field drainage and replacing the existing in-field soil with proper material that will allow us to turn over the field quicker after a rain event and for staff to do proper maintenance. This work enables staff to be more efficient and creates a safer and improved user experience as the material is currently hard-packed. And we did the same work this fall, actually, at Means Cove. And our manager of parks and facilities went to check after the rain today and sent me pictures of both what, what Means Cove looks like and what Walter Jewett looks like. And it's made a significant impact, which, again, will improve our efficiency and maintenance, but also improve the experience for our users. So capital renewal with vehicles, we have $120,000 for a skid steer replacement. This piece of equipment that we're operating now is 2014. It's our main piece of equipment for moving material in snow. It's unreliable currently, and breaks down often. And it's been recommended by the Fleet Department to replace, along with the $95,000 truck. And this truck that's recommended for replacement is a 2017 three-quarter ton that's used for plowing, snow, watering, et cetera. It's one of our main work vehicles. It's covered in salt all winter and has extensive rust on the frame and the underside. And again, it's been recommended by Fleet to be replaced. So if you look at the deferrals that we are recommending to move to the following budget years, we have three items. They are playground refurbishment, $500,000. Gondola Point Beach upgrades, Phase One, $500,000. And $100,000 for the Cuplex sound system replacement. So the playground that we're recommending be deferred would be Gold Rush Playground. It's over 25 years old, and as recommended in the master plan, it's due for an upgrade as well as a connection to the Trans-Canada Trail that goes right by that space. We also have Gondola Point Beach upgrades, Phase One. Last year, our staff installed trail counters a year ago to see, to collect data, so we can see how many people are using the beach. And we have our stats that are collected by the lifeguards annually. So we have a snapshot of the people that are within the swim area at both Gondola Point and Means Cove. But what was staggering to me, once we collected that data and looked at it, is there's actually 16,000 people that have used that space over the, over the year. So in alignment with the Recreation Master Plan, we, which recommended washrooms in this space, we surveyed the public this summer as well. We received almost 300 responses to our survey to have a look at that space and see what people are looking for, what they're interested in proving, and of course, washrooms, change rooms is number one. They would also like to see some benches and tables and, and such. So, and continue to improve on accessibility like we did with the Mobi mat and what have, you know, improving the walkway and realigning the asphalt there, installing new asphalt. So it's quite, it's quite popular. It's not just a beach. You know, our beach numbers indicated that there was just under 2,000 people there this summer, which, which was low considering the heat of the summer. But again, those lifeguards are just capturing, you know, what's in front of them, not in the areas around them, not in the dog park. So I think it was really critical that we use the trail counters and, and get a snapshot. And we were all surprised at the magnitude of use of that space. So we're using that data to make, help inform our decision and making and planning moving forward for that space. So you'll see that we moved, that we're just completing that now, so we've moved that out to 2027. And then, of course, the Cuplex sound system replacement, that's 15 years old now as well. And, and as you're well aware, from events, it's had some challenges in the past. So we're, we're looking to replace that sound system in the future as we host, continue to host many events there. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon. And I'd like to recognize that we do have some staff members with us today under your observation and direction. And I'd like to thank them publicly for the work that all of you do in order to make this such a, a town of choice and a town of excellence when we provide services for our residents. So thank you for being here and thank you for the work that you do. Now I will open the floor to questions for Ms. Perton Dixon. Okay. Okay, take that back. We're going to go through the Director of Engineering and Works first, and then we will so ask questions of both the Director of Community Services and the Director of Engineering. So Mr. Lojé, Director of Engineering and Works, please.
Thank you, worship, and this is going to be fun for me, looking over top of glasses and reading the PowerPoint at the same time. So apologies if I trip on myself, should invest in some split, but I'll fall down the stairs if I do. So we presented the Transportation Services Capital Program, similar to what we have in the previous years, followed some defined alignings for the groupings, and self-followed the same program categories that Mr. Watson has identified with respect to capital renewal and new additions. When we look at the programs that we've, we're proposing at this stage of the game, under the engineering programs, we are looking at the replacement of equipment integral to the engineering team downstairs, ones being the GPS unit, which is used for gathering of field data, as well as laying out jobs. When we made the switch to creating all in-house work for our street capital program, these units have proved crucial to allow the staff to go out and lay out the field work, but also monitor progress, progress payments, and then design future work. So these are reaching their, their useful life. We are able to trade in the units as we come forward, so with a trade-in, we're looking at GPS units that's in the vicinity of $50,000. The plotter downstairs has, has reached its useful life. It's no longer repairable. So what we're doing is replacing that plotter. It's a $10,000 expenditure. Some of the more popular programs that the town has seen, we're looking to continue those. The traffic calming equipment, that is the rapid-flash beacons that we see at the pedestrian crossings, the radar speed signs, the inter-block paddles, traffic control. We generally spend about $60,000 a year in those programs. Last year, we had one traffic rapid-flash beacon set left over, and we've actually used all of the sets, the one we had left over. So we currently have no inventory for replacement or repair if something becomes damaged. So we want to get ourselves back up to a compliment. Usually, we bring in three sets. So we're proposing four sets next year, so we can keep a set on the shelf. If the programs continue to be as successful as they have been with requests to the town and approvals, we may see this come back to council. Fortunately, we do have a standing order with the supplier, so we can look at a projected cost that we can pretty much be sure for the full year. The safety of the staff has, has been something that we focus on lately as well. We're looking at the introduction of some construction zone, temporary traffic singles. We're looking at a set that is a little bit more portable for municipal use, but also a little bit more user-friendly, that actually has a countdown clock. So rather than sitting at a temporary light, you don't know when it's going to turn to you, we'll actually have a countdown clock showing you that, okay, you've got 120-second wait, and it'll show you what you're looking at. We feel that's a little bit more appropriate for the subdivisions that we're in. And we want to make sure that, that the traffic can continue to move while we work on the subdivisions and the streets in the town. The final item that we've got in the Transportation Services Program package is this local improvement, the storm sewer. This hasn't seen as much uptake in the last couple of years, and this is where we look at existing ditches. Usually, it's in the older subdivisions where, for more, more for aesthetics and maintenance, the people will share with the town to, to fill in the ditches. What we're seeing, that the demand is coming down because we're requiring in the subdivisions that they include storm sewer in most of the subdivisions and have ditches that meet our, our specifications. So it, I think the slowdown we may see over the next year or two, we'll have to reexamine the local improvement from a storm sewer perspective and look at whether we decide to incorporate that into just a general storm sewer program. Speaking of which, with the storm sewer program, what we've done in our last year, we did a storm sewer asset management plan. With the asset management plan, as council is familiar, most asset management plans will recommend some level of maintenance that you have to undertake each year to make sure that you can continue to meet the demands of the, of the facilities that you do own, the asset classes that you do own. Under the asset management plan for stormwater, what we're doing is we're looking at areas that are impacted by undersized storm pipe, undersized, undersized pipe that may cause flooding hazards, areas that may be impacted by climate change, or we're looking to offset aging and infrastructure. And last couple of years, we've, we've gone anywhere from $160,000 to $200,000 investment as a, as a line item. This year, we're proposing to increase this to, to a $400,000 expenditure for stormwater management. Once we do this initial takeoff, we'll get a lot of the significant areas addressed, and we're proposing in future years that this be maintained at a $300,000 level to maintain a regular investment. So essentially, we're looking to go from a 160 or 150 that we've seen in the previous years to 400 this year, to 300 in the preview, in future years. What we also are looking to, by doing it now under asset management, will look to incorporate some of these stormwater costs into our street capital. So if we know we're going to be resurfacing a street, some of the older streets, we can roll a stormwater project into the street capital project. And in doing that, what it does is it helps us spread the costs through different programs. The Transportation Services, we've, 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 council has mentioned here this evening, and I took the liberty of extending the draft plan to council earlier this week. I, I made a request of council last year and this spring to look at the works facility. When we're talking about, I, I, I hear, you know, we're looking at, you know, 15, 20, 25-year useful lives. We're talking about a facility that was 43 years old. We're talking about a facility that, when we look at the town hall here and modest improvements to the washrooms, I think we have staff in the works facilities that would kill for the modest improvements that we're proposing at the washroom here at the town hall. This is a facility that is the heart and soul of the public works, that manages and maintains, provides a level of service to the town that we've grown to appreciate, sometimes take for granted. And in order to do that, and in order to do that with a continued growth in mind, we felt that the time was appropriate to look at the full works facility and propose a phased approach to it. We, we've delayed doing this a couple of years with the recognition that, as Council Miller mentioned a little earlier, that there are some major adventures on the town's books that, that are coming to fruition. And we felt that this was the appropriate time that we could look at it and say, okay, we're not looking at a, something that's going to supply the town with another additional financial burden, but it's something that we can carry forward. The facilities and condition assessment that we've undertaken has, has demonstrated to us that many of the items in that particular complex and the buildings are, have reached the end of their useful life. It's, we consider it critical infrastructure. We consider it key to making sure that the, the equipment and the staff have the safest and, and most up-to-date equipment to use. COVID has taught us some, some ugly lessons with respect to personal safety and personal security that, that we, we had to scramble with at the works facility to be able to accommodate it. And we were fortunate that we had the ability to leverage the Civic Center to, to help us work with that. I know that many of council has taken tours through the facility, and if you haven't lately, I'm more than welcome to take you through there. But those that have genuinely have seen that we've got dedicated staff working in, in conditions that really warrant us to be looking at the future for them. So what we did is we looked at our current needs and projected that into a 10- or 15-year horizon to say, okay, what do we reasonably see in the foreseeable future that we would need to operate here? And it was discovered that even from a most basic needs analysis, we are operating at, at a less than, than appropriate space allocations from an industry standard. You know, we're working with 21,000 square feet of space when we look at the facilities that we offer now, the current projects, the current tasks that we undertake now. Equivalent comparable facilities are operating at three times that, they're operating at 75,000 square feet of, of space to do the same things that we're trying to do in 21,000 square feet of space. We're looking at making sure that we can address water quality issues that have been undertaken, that, that we've, we've had at that facility. We want to modernize and, and update the fuel dispensing system, which has become a regional facility, in essence, that now we have police and fire using our, our fuel dispensing. And if we look at that particular upgrade, we can look at, at protecting that. The yard buildings are, are lean-to's that, that our staff have constructed themselves over time to be able to house some of the facilities that they need. We have, we have a, a wash facility that's inside of a building that corrodes a metal building. And if you don't wash, for example, your, your equipment after it's used, particularly in the wintertime, when you're looking at a high corrosive material like salt, it, it impacts the useful life of those vehicles. So what we're proposing in, in the, in the program is as an initial investment of $5 million in 2026, the capital program that we'll undertake to do the, essentially, the site work. So what we'll do is, is if you've read the draft report, we're looking at taking some of the items that are in the middle of the yard, the fuel facilities, the salt facility, the, the, a wash bay, relocating those to the fringes to a, to newly designed acreage, then preparing the center site for a brand-new facility that can be phased in construction. So, so the and I've got to stop a bit. The, the time that the, the staff put into this particular building to do the work that they do, it's, it's something that, you know, I hate to think that we take for granted, but it's something that, when we look at some of the other efforts that have made, been made around the community, I think it's time that we look at the works facility and say, okay, this is, this is the appropriate time to do this work for us. And, and we, we do recognize that this is a major ask, and that's why we're looking at an incremental investment. We're not looking at something that, that, that is full bore all out the first year because even when you look at a reasonable construction phasing, there's no way that you can say, okay, we're going to give everything in, in this particular budget year, but it won't be completed in that particular budget year. We've seen too many facilities out there of different various styles and, and, and of uses, you know, whether it's a, whether it's an arena, whether it's a pool, whether it's a works facility, that they start in a particular year, and it's a two-year, two-year, sometimes three-year construction timeline. So we wanted to be reflective of that when we did the, the planning and the budget. We also wanted to make sure that we reflected the fact that this has to stay operational. This is, this is, this is a, a non-starter to say, okay, we're going to shut something down as, from a level of service to the town. So we're proposing in a phasing that can be done in a, in a reasonable and, and reliable continuing the level of service that we're providing. Earlier this, this, this presentation, there was some discussion about Um, uh, earlier this 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 presentation, there was some discussion about uh co-locating other facilities. You know, the draft report that we prepared is essentially focused on the works function. It is a thirty-eight acre parcel that we're dealing with, um, and we we envisioned that about eleven acres of it is actually usable. We've got um in some environmental constraints there, the the mud lake, uh, the highway setbacks, things of that nature, so. Uh, we've we've tried to minimize that in that particular footprint that we're propo- as being proposed. Um, so to co-locate other facilities, it would be possible. Um, we did not include it in this particular review, other than uh co-locating uh the engineering staff in that particular building, so that would. We we felt that would be a reasonable, um, uh, uh, an appropriate move. Particularly when we're looking at this town hall and looking at the spacing constraints that we have at the town hall, this may address some of the short-term needs for this particular facility. That does not say that this is can't be done. Uh, we can always look at things like. You know, but the the proposal that we're looking at doesn't do anything to the greenhouse, doesn't do anything to the side storage. Um, you know, there's always an opportunity if we say, okay, let's let's look at an expansion of a particular building. With and remove some of these other outbuildings, those could occur. There's nothing stopping us from saying. All right, if we're if we're looking at a multi-field facility and we uh and we say that the Walter Jewett Field is 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 it is or isn't appropriate, we can put a works. Parks facility on that site, that's completely, it's it's all in that complex, but from our perspective, we really only focused on the work side of things and the functions of the works. And the utility building that we could co-locate. The other thing that uh I think is key to this particular proposal um is uh. A comprehensive and holistic approach to fleet management. And I think what we will see as part of this is the ability for the town to um. Not only manage the works fleet, uh, the utility fleet, the parks fleet, but we would have some capacity to look at some regional capa- some regional offerings. Not just with the fueling, but perhaps with the wash bay, you know, uh, 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 the wash bay that's there. Or some limited uh fleet uh repair and maintenance. We would probably avoid getting into specialized fleet maintenance, ladder trucks, things of that nature, oversized vehicles, just by nature of the work that they do. But it but this facility does have the proposed, has the ability to. May take us beyond what we do now, if that's the the exercise that we have to look at, so. Um, I I will, I will stop at this particular stage on this item on the agenda uh of of my presentation. I could go on and on and on, and you don't need to hear from me on and on and on. On our fleet side, um, we look at useful life. The hot box unit has reached its useful life. This is something that, uh, when we introduced it initially to council. I think we've had a lot of positive feedback. It it extended our, it extended our um paving schedule. Later in the in the fall and earlier in the start in the spring. Uh, we are, we are now able to leverage uh asphalt tailings, that is the shavings that they take off the paving. We've actually. Now changed our street capital program so that all tailings come to the town, to our work yard, so we can use that. Um, so I, we think it's it's a great, a great initial investment. We're showing a replacement of it, and in in future years, we're actually adding a second unit. Um, the the backhoe excavator that we have is a multi-use uh uh piece of equipment. Is pretty much used every day, all day long. We have two crews that will use them and. We have to replace one of those, um, that's identified at two seventy-five. And and uh we've been very good at uh regular replacement of the snow plows in our fleet. On that fifteen to twenty-year cycle, uh, we have a unit that's due for its replacement now. Uh, unit three thirty-one, we sort of tied uh four hundred thirty-one, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to that particular piece of equipment. Uh, under the street capital, uh, and and this is where it gets a little interesting, and I think uh it it'll generate some discussion with respect to what. Uh, Mr. Watson said a little earlier. Um, we are looking at seven point nine nine million dollars for the. Recommendations that fall under the Hampton Road Streetscape Program. That is what we saw at the uh pre- presentation from End Globe at the last council meeting. This is the, as 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 uh RCO mentioned, the worst-case scenario is that. What happens if we don't get funding? We've been turned down twice for uh uh half funding. Um, there is, you know, we're top of the mind for future funding. Um, but the future funding, if we see it, we don't know the format that it will follow. We don't know the application process that will follow. Um, we have, we have yet to see a program that just carries forward, that is, oh yeah, we'll just add money to the pot. They always change the application process. They always change requirements. If we remember a few years back, the infrastructure program was heavily focused on climate change. All of a sudden, one year it shifted and it became housing. And so we anticipate that if there is a future infrastructure program, they're gonna be looking at some changes in the application program. Which which in turn would affect what we need to do. The initial housing accelerator fund program was a fifty percent contribution. So even if we look at a fifty percent contribution, uh, here we're looking at four million out of the of an eight million dollar budget roughly. If we're looking at the fact that um only part of it is for street work and some of it is for underground infrastructure, then that cuts that in half again. So we we feel that this particular project warrants um aggressive lobbying on coun- by council and on council's behalf. We feel that this particular project warrants an updated application, so that we can actually look for as maximize your funding on the project. Um, I don't think council has any uh qualms about paying our fair share. But we want to make sure that we can leverage what we can from the programs that are out there. We did include six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our capital program for landing court, um, just just uh as as an aside that we can bring towards this. Um, we have some money in our current uh, the the former gas tax that we were leveraging for street capital. But that still leaves us shy of of the major amount of the funding for this particular program. Um, as and and I don't want to repeat the presentation that we heard from End Globe, uh, you know, but you're looking at that uh improvement, public space, improve, improve public access. Um, defined uh uh pedestrian access, defined AT paths. You're looking at speeding control, you're looking at de- development, downtown development. You're looking at a water system, and we'll talk about it in the utility capital program, a water system that, um. And you hear Mr. Colburn, our municipal planning officer, gets calls daily about, do you have water yet? We have people proposing multi-story facilities in this town if we have water. And this is the type of investment that we need to leverage, but it comes back to, are we prepared to. Uh, do the legwork to get other levels of government to commit to it, or are we by default prepared to make this commitment ourselves? Um, so that's that's my high horse with respect to this particular phase of roads and streets. The Hampton Road Streetscape Program was one that council. Rightfully so, has a great vision for, and I think this is something that will define the town for it's it's. We use the term when we we were talking to our consultants, a ge- a generational type of decision. The Hampton Road in this particular area is a generational type of decision. You can change this face of this area of Hampton Road for a generation and beyond. Our our street capital program, we've broken it down uh as well. Um, when we look at, we look at, it seems like a little kid reaching over to to this, this, change like program for me. When we look at um uh the streets that we have right now, we've we've initiated the the work on the. Millennium Drive resurfacing, so the introduction of of multi-use trail, we're proposing to continue this, take us past the Shanex area. Uh, past the uh, the the old call up, the food land area, um, so that we can do this in two phases. Um, and uh, this is just a continuation of that particular program. The bulk of the street capital program, uh, we see for twenty twenty-six is identified and and Mr. Watson ta- mentioned a little earlier. This is consistent with the um recommendations that. That we've made with council and five years ago, when we looked at our initial asset management plan, where we wanted to. Maintain an average pavement rating in the municipality no lower than seventy. What we're seeing on this particular street lists are streets that are below fifty. Uh, these are streets that if you delay or we do not do anything on these particular streets, they will go into the forties, the low forties. And all of a sudden, the level of effort that you undertake to just to maintain is is time that's taking away from the streets that you want to keep in the seventies. So, um, it it was an interesting discussion, not just with our engineering team, but with the works department crew as well. Because we, that was the first question we put to them was, okay, which are the streets that you go to most often, we and 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 please don't take this the wrong way, waste your time. And these are some of the streets that they spend more time going back, repaving, repot-holing on a regular basis, and if we could address them. Uh, it would save up their time significantly to go back to some of the, some of the regular work that they would have to do on the. Uh, uh, maintenance of streets in the normal program. Um, the the budget is based on a uh. Projection that uh it was, I think it was two years ago, we saw asphalt that was, uh, we budgeted at one twenty-five, it came in at one eighteen. Uh, last year, we budgeted asphalt at one fifty, it came in at one thirty-two. Uh, this year, we're budgeting a budget at one sixty-five with an end with with hope, fingers crossed, that we would see asphalt in the one fifty range or better. But this is, this is, um, you know, taking into account the discussions that we've had in previous budget years, we've we've not overinflated our estimates this time. You know, to 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 try to say, okay, we need more. This is a a true um. Uh, reasonable estimate of what we expect to see and and with an allowance just in case. The leverage that we have, if we do come under with our 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 budget, is that we've uh transitioned any savings to a contingency. So essentially, instead of taking a street capital grab and 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 identifying, we have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency. What happens are are bidders will look at that and go, oh, that's my money. They, oh, I've got to figure a way to spend the two hundred thousand dollars, as opposed to us having the two hundred thousand dollars in our budget as our own contingency. Then we can decide, okay, if it doesn't get used, we can come back and say, all right, let's use it on another street, or let's expand the limits of the street. Um, and we felt that that the last uh two construction years has been more effective use of the the budget allocations. Um, the streets, the street maps that that we are uh proposing. Uh, are as as usual, spread out throughout the town. Um, we're not seeing a. Core investment in one particular area, other than to say, if there are two or three streets within close, close proximity. And due to economies of scale, we can, we should do work in those two streets, we're proposing to do those at the same time. Um, the other thing is, and and a slight correction, um, I I respecting what the the deputy mayor had mentioned about the the. Street capital program, the street capital program was actually put out in June. All of our streets were paved by the end of uh August. Uh, the work that is being done in September and October is actually associated with our utility work, the paving of the Condola Point Road and this. The uh work on the uh Cedar Ridge Boulevard. So we do see this particular program. Doing the same timing, starting early in in May, soon as the spring waves comes off. Um, and being completed by August, uh, that's the proposal. Um, it is a size of a program that is uh consistent with what is managed by our in-house team. Uh, this will be uh designed, uh, managed, uh, inspected, uh, uh, by our engineering team. Which brought us to the first recommendations with respect to the the plotter, the GPS unit. Um, when you look at, and I've touched on it this before, when you look at a. Two point eight, two point nine, say, three million dollar project, and you'll get eighteen percent, you're talking three hundred sixty thousand dollars worth of consulting fees that is being done in-house. By our staff at a minimum, and I think that's something that that we've been able to leverage with the investments that we've made, so I think this is, this is a. A good selling feature for our engineering team and the work that they do in the summertime. The uh, that's the bulk of the transportation side of the streets and the transportation side capital. Um, and the associated equipment. The utility capital side that we that we're identifying really is um two major items. The first item is being the. Uh, planned upgrade of uh the Maple Grove Pump Station. Um, and those of you that have been down the Maple Grove area, wonder what that green tin can is surrounded by the cedar hedging, that is a pump station. Um, we've been, uh, it it falls under regular inspection and our insurance company has identified some concerns with corrosion. Some of the electrical systems and requiring us to upgrade that facility. Now, that is to say, the pumps and the underground systems are fully functioning and well intact. What we're proposing this particular bu- budget. Is to eliminate the tin can component and and actually just put a proper building on top of that, and that can be done. Similar to what was done down on Longwood Park, if you, it's a nice little aesthetically pleasing building and 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 uh as well. Um, myself and uh members of the utility staff have had certain body parts. Threatened to be cut off if we cut down any of those cedar trees, so we'll do what we can to keep the cedar, the cedar trees intact when we do the work in this particular area. Um, the the ability to look at this um i- is is something that uh I think will help. Um, in that particular area, just for the aesthetics and just for the long-term maintenance, and addresses some of the insurance concerns that have been brought to our attention. Also part of the twenty twenty-six uh sanitary sewer program, we're looking at regional wastewater. Um, as as Mr. Watson touched on earlier, uh, everything has a useful life a- and uh the wastewater systems are no different. Um, if council, those members of council that were around back in the uh mid nineties. We dealt with the the region as a whole, and we opted to. To undertake wastewater treatment on our, in our own backyard, so to speak. We we invested in the facility, knowing that we had a twenty-five year use, y- year useful life. We're quickly a- a- approaching that. Um, and what we've done is we've taken steps in the interim in-house. At the plant to extend it, uh, looking at increased aeration, additional chemicals, uh, solids removals. Things that we can do to make sure that we can continue to provide the best level of service at that facility. But we do have find ourselves at a crossroads in that, we have to decide what we want to be when we grow up. Do we want to continue to operate our own facility and and upgrade it accordingly? Um, we've been advised that our neighbor down the road is looking at a larger upgraded facility. Uh, they're going through their environmental impact assessment. They've asked uh adjacent property owners, as well as us, as an an adjacent uh stakeholder. If we have any questions, concerns, issues. We did make some initial discussions with them about the capacity that they're proposing. Their proposed facility is is not sized to accommodate our community. It's 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 sized to accommodate what they have now with a potential growth. If we look at what Quis Pam SIS has and what we have potentially to grow. What they're proposing in in our neighboring community would have to be three times the size that they have are proposing now. Um, that is not to say that they're open to discussions. They are very much willing to look at alternatives if we choose to go down that road. What we felt was we should do is look at ourselves first and say, okay, let's look at what are we looking at from a lifespan? What are we looking at for alternatives? What are we looking at for implications uh to treatment? I mean, and as as Mr. Watson mentioned, there's essentially three things that we're looking at. We're looking at. Um, taking our current facility and just taking the the outfall. And treating the outfall so that it hits the river at a proper, at a proper uh effluent quality. We're looking at taking our own facility and upgrading it to a new mechanical, chemical, whatever version of itself. And and transform it so that's in-house and everything, so that coming out of the pipe, it's clean. Or do we look at keeping it in some format and partnering with our neighboring community to say, is there a way that they can offer partial? Uh, some level of of co-treatment, some level of of uh of of uh coverage for us. That then they would look at some form of payment. Um, we have not, and we have not even broached any type of regional discussion, uh, commissions or anything like that. This is strictly a level of service discussion that we've had, um, and um. With the understanding that anything that we do really has to be decided at this forum at council. Respecting the fact that, you know, we we ultimately are responsible for our own wastewater and how we choose to deal with it. But also looking at the fact that that we uh currently operate uh a plant that uh that meets and 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 generally exceeds. Standards that we are required to follow from the province. So it's that commitment that we've we've made, and I know how do we want to behave with it on a go-forward basis. So we've included in this particular uh budget fifty thousand dollars, long story short, to to look at that design, the next step, and see what is involved. Um, again, uh, to to build off what our our CIO tested on the earlier stages. These are, these are our own controllable items. If something happens outside of control. Say that the neighboring community speeds up their their programs, they choose not to accommodate us, whatever. That's gonna have a whole different repercussion on what we choose to do, so these are just trying to control a decision one step at a time that is in front of us. Um, and then with that, um. We fi- finish up with uh with the water side of our utility. Uh, I touched on a little earlier, the four million bucks that's there for the Hampton Road, that's pine wood, petting gill, the clarewood and the. Pressure reduction valve uh chamber that's needed as part of the water expansion. Um, our our initial understanding was this was going to be housing covered. It was gonna be a straight in, straight out. Um, and that's no longer been the case for us. And the ad question is, how much of it is actually eligible to be straight in, straight out? We have to make those those discussions, we have to make those. Um, inquiries, and we then have to be prepared, if it's not a hundred percent straight in, straight out, how do we make it that, or what are we prepared to do? Um, and then on the other side of the water utility, our our two uh planned uh upgrades, one is the generator at the water tower. Um, that gives us a remote power of council. We'll recall, a couple of weeks ago, we had a a boil water at the. Ridgewood par- at the Mel- Melanie Drive system, and that was associated with the fact that we don't have a generator there to. During the power outage, it ju- it was just a blip, so we had a boil order because we just couldn't get the tower. So we had a boil order because we just couldn't get the tower or the water system up and running on Melanie Drive. We have reconfigured that now, we've got, uh, uh, a, a temporary setup in there with a automatic transfer switch with the generator, so. But we want to be able to do this at the Millennium Drive, the main water tower. And then, um, uh, as the water system on Cedar Ridge expands, uh, we want to ensure we continue with the water conservation efforts that we've taken with water meters. And that allows us buying the meters so they can be installed in the house. Uh, and this is a $50,000 investment. That allows us to have an inventory of meters to put new ones in, uh, replace existing ones we have in other areas of the Millennium system as they reach their useful life, and that's identified at $50,000. So those are the capital items that fall under my umbrella. Thank you very much for your, uh, patience and, and attention and, uh, I will turn it to, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Lojé. Now, ladies and gentlemen, if you have questions or if you'd like to direct them first to the Director of Community, Community Services, Ms. Perton Dixon. We can begin with that to keep the, the two separate. So I will turn to you now if there are any questions or clarification that you might require. Counselor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to, to staff actually for very well, well-done 2026 capital. Um, I will have questions on the 27, 28, but for now I'll just stick on 2026. Um, and I'll, I'll just start with community services, because that was the first one. The, the only one, the only one that I have a, a question on, if it can be deferred or not, is basically the, the new addition to the, um, Hammond River Park, I know it's a trail, um, but it's new right now. We're still not sure exactly what's going to happen with regional services. We hope things will change, but it's a significant number. So my initial thought is, it's okay for now, let's see, but we haven't done the operational budget, we haven't done everything else. That this could be something that if we're having issues trying to balance a budget or whatever our number is, that, that's the only thing I would, I would question, a potential of removing, because it's brand new. It's not, it's not helping something else out, so. Um, and then we'll get into 2020, the others later, but that's, that's just a, just a comment on that one, because there's lots of stuff going on. And again, hopeful, we're all hopeful, things will change after 2026. And then that will open up some more discussions for later, but for 2026, that's the only thing that I have, uh, comment on for community services. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. And, and, and of course, the, the questions in the, uh, direction at this point will be for the 2026 budget. The preview of the budget over the next four years is exactly that, and this is new to us. We typically, uh, would have a preview, but it would be very, uh, limited in what we were looking at. So, so this certainly gives us food for thought and, uh, I, I just hope that council will bear in mind that we need to move ahead with the 2026 budget, however that might look. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, um, thank you for the budget, it's very well done. I just have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, the Matthews Cove Bridge, is that being done in-house? Or is that $30,000 contracted out?
It's contracted out, are we going to do the bridge? We've had a consultant, we've hired a consultant to do the work up to this point, um, for the slope remediation, et cetera. But, uh, defer to the parks manager, are we going to do that, we're going to do that in-house or contracted out? Eighty percent will be contracted out.
And, um, so, um, thank you for that. My, my next question was about, um, yeah, um, to the, um, Director of Community Services. You, you gave us the Gondola Point Beach figures and I was a little confused on that. So is that, there, the, you're saying that there's 16,000 people on the trail markers that went into the Gondola Point Beach? I don't, and then there was 2,000, I was a little confused, so that was one thing I was confused on. And I'm wondering what the counts were at the Means Cove Beach? Because I understand since we've, the pool, when the pool reaches maximum, which it does, did a lot this year, I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think because we had such a hot summer that the maximums that they'll divert to the Gondola Point Beach. So I'm just wondering, um, just for clarification for myself, what those figures are.
Sure, go ahead, through you, Your Worship. So we have trail counters at the Gondola Point Beach, not at Means Cove, because there are so many different points of entry. With Gondola Point, it's easier because there's one pathway in. So there's, were 16,000 people that visited that area, the beach, the dog-friendly beach area, over a year. Of those 16,000, just under 2,000 went specifically to the swim area. Is that, does that help? Yeah, so as part of the Recreation Master Plan, uh, it recommended washrooms and a look at that space. So, uh, we thought as a department that the alignment of that work with the, um, with the Gondola Point Road planning and work that's happening, we delayed that recommendation as that other project moved forward, because we saw a lot of synergy with, between, um, those two projects. With the active transportation link, we feel that being on Trans-Canada Trail as we are, leading right up to the ferry, that there might be some funding opportunities from the Trans-Canada Trail. So that's why we stepped, took a step back on that project and took the time to set out the trail counters and, um, to survey the community like we did this summer, to see, just to ensure that, uh, we're still on the correct path of what the, what the requirements are and what the community's interested in seeing in that area. And almost all of the 300 surveys were washrooms, change rooms.
Thank you, I see no other lights on, so I'm assuming, okay, Counselor Luck.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, I have two questions actually. Um, I wanted just to get some clarity about the corporate services capital from Mr. Watson. And I have, uh, a question for, uh, our Community Services, uh, Director. Um, so just in terms of the council chambers, um, does that include technology? I just feel like $350,000 seems like a lot for paint. So I was just looking for a bit of clarity on that.
Yes, thank you, uh, even through you, Your Worship. Uh, the overall estimate as, uh, the, the design and consulting engineers that we're working with, I do have an AV expert as part of that mix, so it's, it's include, the, the construction estimate does include the IT section.
Okay, and I, I guess just to comment on that is, you know, again, I think that they're, they're tired, but they're still usable in the sense that when we look at, if, if we are, again, looking for ways, because we haven't seen the operation budget, that is one area that I think potentially we could delay. I don't think it's in dire straits. Um, you know, I'm just looking around this room and it's, I mean, I think a lot of councils would still kill for a, a council chamber like this. So anyway, I just wanted to comment on that, because that is a big chunk of money that potentially, uh, might flush out in, um, when we start looking at the rest of the budget and if we have to find things to, to hold off on. Um, and then my question, my second question is directed to, um, Ms. Perton Dixon. Um, in terms of, I just wanted clarity on, you had mentioned about the Parks Department, um, potentially going into the QMA, like that doesn't per- preclude a future fieldhouse, like that would be at the back? It wouldn't be that the plan is for? Oh, okay, I thought you had commented a bit of, when you were presenting, sorry.
My, my worship, my comment was about an assessment that we were hiring an engineering firm to do an assessment of the Parks Department, the QMA and the Qplex. Uh, so of the structural, mechanical and electrical.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the expansion or twinning of the Qplex would obviously impact the Parks Department and the tennis courts. And there will be at that point, we anticipate, at the end of their useful life. So we would need to relocate those services, but I believe that was Mr. Watson that alluded to the QMA. As a potential, in the Recreation Master Plan, it discusses, uh, a, a fieldhouse. But I think to, that's part of the process of that $175,000 that we've requested is to not only get the, uh, concepts, budgets, designs for the twinning, but then also to explore with the community and council, what would we, what will the QMA be moving forward? Is it a fieldhouse? Is it a Parks Department? Well, is it both? What will that look like?
And just, uh, one other question, I guess, um, again, more so looking, not that we want it, just it was a great job. And again, all the things that are put in this, um, for all of our staff, you know, are, are really important. So it's really hard to kind of look at this, because again, it's out of context with the greater budget. Um, but I do, um, tend to agree with Counselor Miller in terms of the $185,000 in regards to the Hammond River Trail System. And we have amazing trails and not that I don't want to see more, but again, looking at kind of priorities and cost. Um, you know, we do also have, um, um, Shady Grove, that's not part of our trail system. But we, that's again, more trail systems that our residents are able to access, so we do have some. So I don't think in terms of if we're looking for areas, that would be one area that, again, I would question if we could hold off on, because it is new in regards to, uh, spending. Again, I don't know until we see the rest of the budget, but really, most of the things that have been presented, uh, so far are pretty critical. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Certainly.
I just would like to comment that, and I, and with, I appreciate the feedback. We have, we only have $375,000 of new items in our department, three items. Um, so I would just, I think it's very important that we continue down the path of honoring our master plans. And I know that's difficult and I appreciate that. But I also know that, uh, we have thousands of visitors, actually our trail counters, and they're not in all our trails. But we're up to almost 200,000 people that use our trails in our community. So if you take in the accounts that of the people using the trails that aren't measured, you know, we're well over 200,000 that use our trails. So I really feel that that is money definitely wisely investment and I, and I, and I appreciate the Shady Grove is there and our community can use it, but we really, from a staff perspective, we, we can't consider that. There, it's not our property, we are not involved in that, and they've done a great job, um, with their facility. But our, our job is to look after our community and our trail system. And I, and I really think it's important that, that we look at that moving forward and, and the number of people that use that trail system. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon. I see no other comments or questions at this point in time. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I was just letting all the recreation go first before. I had a, just a couple of clarifications from Mr. Lojé. Um, I'm aligned with everything we've got in there, so that.
Excuse me just one moment. Were there any other questions for Ms. Perton Dixon? Yes, so we are moving on, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry, Counselor Miller.
Yeah, um, a- again, I have, uh, I, I'm, I'm okay with all the things in there. I just had a couple of just clarifications. Um, for the more beacons and signs and speed signs, are we also looking at, uh, potentially additional 40 km/h signs? And that's more to our last council meeting where we originally had, did it, tried to do a bylaw to blanket 40, and then we can't because of other provincial and federal laws. Um, and I drove around a lot of places in Rossay where they do have all their side streets. A lot of the side streets do start with a 40, like the major ones. So I didn't know if there's, I, I, I'll, I got like three things, so I'll just do them all. So the one on one, I didn't know if we added any extra 40 km/h signs in there, just because that may be something we want to look at just to publicly post, because that last speeding complaint or speeding, uh, question, when the police were there, they said, well, it's 50, but the streets in front of it and beside it are 30 and 40. So it, it, that doesn't make sense, but I know those signs just don't, don't grow, so we got to order them. Um, my question, then the next question is on the stormwater, uh, management. Uh, I don't know the gentleman's name, but the one that came in about Stock Farm Road, that we said we would look at those rocks and stuff as part of 2026, so I didn't know if that was, that extra 60 was included. Um, the other little que- two other questions and all, three. Um, just a question, because it comes into our future plans for new ball fields and that and, or new fields. Um, I didn't know if part of the land we have where the, the Walter Jewett is and where we're also doing the expansion, if part of that close to Mud Lake is usable for any, any of the field, because there's a, quite a large spot, so that's kind of for both you. Um, we have a $500,000 big snow blower that we haven't used for a long time. Uh, I don't know if we were able to rent that out or sell that, we bought it many years ago. And of course, today we sell it, we'll, we'll have a three-foot snowstorm. Um, and the last, last on the other things is, uh, for future, and we'll talk about future later, but is, with all the water we're trying to do in infrastructure, I'm just hoping that we can get out as many asks or requests as possible, provincial, federal. Um, and I only say that because during the provincial, uh, elections, it's kind of funny, we had the, the ex-premier said, oh, ask, ask for money and I would have gave it to you. Well, you, you knew we had problems all along, so I, I guess, uh, the more we ask for, the better we can get, so. So just those two or three questions, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Mr. Lojé.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship, to Counselor Miller. Um, and you're right, 40 km/h, you can't, I, I wish I could buy 40 km/h seeds and we just plant and they would grow, but the, but it, but it, uh, we do have, uh, additional 40 km/h signs in our operating budget, because we're replacing existing signs. So the posts would remain, things like that, so we feel that we've got, uh, signage, uh, we, we discuss that with my staff and we have signage to look at. Particularly as requests come in, we can manage it, no issues at all. If we undertake a specific program to target a particular subdivision or trouble area, we have enough to cover it. If we do go to a blanket every single street, we, we wouldn't have staff time to do it anyway. Um, so I think we're covered under our operating side from a 40 km/h perspective. Uh, under stormwater management, uh, you know, the stock farm, it would be, this would cover, if, if council recalls, the past couple of years, I referred to that 150, that 200,000 that we spent. This would incorporate that, all those types of program, those, uh, stormwater program, projects as well. So that would be covered under what is being proposed. So it's, it's not in addition to this, is now this is going to be a new envelope with a new amount. Uh, the Mud Lake, uh, the thing to remember with the Walter Drew Ball Field is that was manufactured. That was a, the ball, the ball field itself was fill. Um, so it's, uh, there is area around it and beside it. But, uh, and, and I think we looked at that initially when it was initially constructed, could be put a, put another ball field. But there's a couple of things that come with it. One is we, most of the field was donated at the time from contractors and things like that, so we built it out. But secondly, and, and, and the Director of Community Services and her can staff speak to it better than I can. When you lay out the ball fields, there's considerations about which way they should be oriented for, you know, sunlight or sunset in your eyes and things like that. And by, by the time we oriented a second field, it was, there was site, you know, the, so we just left it as it was. Um, and from the environmental perspective, with the fleet or the facilities upgraded proposing, where we've identified a environmental buffer, so out of the 38 acres, we're, we're trying to stay clear of any buffer impacts. And so that's why we've restricted it to the center core of the development area. Um, the snow blower, uh, you, you said it with your final statement, you know, as soon as you sell it, it's going to, you're going to have a 10-foot snowstorm. But we, it is used every season. Um, all the courts, cul-de-sacs, the, the, what we call the downtown area, we use that, uh, after the big storms to clear off the shoulders, the sight distance issues that pop up. So it is, it is used extensively every winter. Um, it's, uh, because it is specialized and has to go on a, on a loader, we're, we are selective when we use it. And, um, 75, 80% of the time, it's actually at night and our, or in our evening shifts, so that, no, people don't see it out on the road as much. But it is used extensively, so I, I would hesitate to, uh, divest ourselves of something that, um, even though you, you know, you, it's a value that when we bought it, you're, it's like a, it's like a computer or a car, as soon as you drive it off the lot, you don't get that value back. Um, and, uh, as far as asking for money, uh, and, and I reiterated in my, uh, my, uh, comments with respect to the Hampton Road streetscape, um, yes, uh, all of the capital programs that we're looking at are precipitated with the fact that we need to do better, uh, at this level, and I'm pointing at all you folks, and at our level, because I have to point, it's like the, you know, how many fingers point back at yourself? Uh, looking for alternative sources of funding. Electric vehicle funding for the fleet, uh, fleet, uh, facilities building, uh, all those things that are, that we, we didn't have. And we said, okay, let's just turn the page and we don't need this to apply for it. Now we can go, that's eligible, let's try to apply. So that is, that is a cornerstone aspect of, of this year's capital program and future year's capital program, however that is administered.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, thank you, Mr. Lojé. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Well, thank you, um, very much for the presentation, very well done. I, I'll go through a couple, uh, of my questions. Um, uh, one comment about the, the, um, what do you call it, construction zone temporary traffic light? There was one, um, being used by the company we're using on Gondola Point Road. And I'll tell you, it makes a huge difference when people, people got very impatient very quickly, but if they can count down, it seems to calm things down. Um, so, uh, that was interesting that it's on here. I, Mike, the big ask, uh, obviously, or two big asks, the one is the, um, capital. Mike, the big ask, obviously, or two big asks, the one is the capital for the Works Department. And so you stated that, that a town of our size, I think I got this right, but you said, "A town of our size would need approximately a building of seventy-five thousand square feet." And I'm just wondering, how, does it have to be that? Like, what are we talking about, a square foot? And then the other question that goes with that is, I'm worried about the amount of land that we seen, you know, thirty-eight acres, but only eleven acres are usable, so I'm worried about getting into environmental issues and not knowing what costs are really going to escalate to. So if you could just take me through that a little bit more, and if we had to relocate something, do we have properties that we could relocate to, like, for instance, the greenhouse? Could the greenhouse be relocated to a different site within the town?
Thank you, through your worship. The Works Facility, the assessment, and I sent, as I mentioned, a copy to council members, the square footage requirements is not based on a community of our size, it's based on the services that we currently operate and choose to operate. So by us having fleet facilities here, by us having a sign shop, by us having a wash bay, by us having inventory, stock room, by us having, moving the engineering crew down there, that is industry standard, the square footage calculation. So that is not to say that, you know, Oremakdo has twenty thousand people, and they, theirs is smaller, they may do things differently. Some communities separate some of the different functions, you know, they have a fleet garage separate in another location. So what the calculation is based on is based on what we currently offer now in that ten-to-fifteen-year planning horizon at that location, what does practical square footage requirements are for that. So that's how that was calculated, and it's explained better in the report that I sent out to council. The footprint that we're looking at takes, takes the buffers into account so that we anticipate not having to deal with environmental issues. So that's why we're only using a smaller footprint, so that's not to say we could make it a little bit bigger or whatever. But what we've done is we've tried to shrink it to a point where let's minimize the potential impact of environmental. So that's why we're looking at the eleven-acre footprint for the facility that we're proposing. That is not to say, however, that, you know, the area, if we need lay-down area for piping, we're gonna cut into trees, and it doesn't impact anything. We've got sedimentation ponds or whatever, very much we could, we could do that. So, but we've tried to take into account these constraints now, rather than trying to deal with it after the fact. And as far as relocating other facilities, again, we looked at our own particular components. I know that the greenhouse was, is there, it has access to water, it has access to some compost soils, bulk mulch, and somewhat a little bit of a security area, and that is not afforded up at the Parks Building. And so, you know, that is always a function of, as the Director of Community Services said, once you get into what you want to be when you go, what you want to deliver, what do you need, where does it have to be, how secure does it have to be, that could very much end up associated with the back of a field house at a new location. Or another recreation facility that you have that has another acre or two beside it, that's, now you've got, you know, equipment right beside a facility, so those are the types of things that I would envision the Director of Community Services and that study would undertake. It's got to be a holistic approach, a holistic look at what you're doing for that area, and that's why we try to focus on the Works Facilities on that holistic level, is, okay, what do we currently offer there? What do we plan to offer in, continue to offer? What is a reasonable growth? If you look at the report that we proposed, even from a snow plowing perspective, and we follow the same growth that we followed in the last fifteen years, we only added three plow routes, which is six staff. So to say, okay, you're looking at six staff in fifteen years, that's just bare minimums to cover plowing if our community grows the way it's projected. That's not to say, well, not forget that we also have six, you know, fifteen years of growth for signs, guide rail, everything else, traffic controls, whatever it might be. This is just bare components, reasonable growth, so we wanted to make sure that we're not overemphasizing. And that's why, when I went to council in the spring of the year, we sought out a consultant who actually deals with us on a national, international level, and we're very comfortable with the direction and the draft that's been provided to us.
We'll go to Councilor Luck first, and then back to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Lojé. I'm just kind of following up on what Deputy Mayor Schreier was talking about. I guess the more I hear about or see, you know, we're asking for seventeen million to do this, and I think it's important, it's important, we need it just for, you know, just for, to function as a town. I just wonder about economy of scale, and I know you commented that when you guys were looking at it, you were looking at it from an engineering works perspective. But I look at like fuel, wash facilities, the greenhouse is there, and I just think, you know, again, could you build up? Like, just looking at, are there ways to use that space? Because if not, within the next five years, potentially, if we start looking at now displacing the parks, we're going to be looking at another building, you know? So I guess I'm just hesitant, I think it's important, and I'm not against spending the money and earmarking it, but I just would like to have, I guess, confidence that we've looked at every angle to make sure that we're not here five years from now going, "Now, what are we gonna do with the Parks Department?" And shoot, wish, you know, it would have been great to, when we were spending the twelve million, you know, over here, or actually seventeen million, that we didn't look at it and kind of put everyone together and address the issues, because there is definitely going to be economy and scale if we are able to do it. Now, maybe it's not feasible, and I appreciate that you weren't looking at it from that lens, but I just, I would really like to see if we could look at it from that lens, knowing that's going to be a reality in the future.
Sure thing, through your worship. Definitely, and I don't want to give the impression that it's not feasible or desirable or could be accommodated, because you can always add on to a building while it exists as paper. You can always go up a level while it exists as, so we can accommodate any level of facility at that site that council wishes to undertake, including community services, including accounting from this particular town, all if you want, down to that particular area. It was two things, it was a reflection of the consultants, the scope of work that we had the consultant do, and also respecting the fact that if I came back and said, "Well, you know, I think I'd like a thirty-million-dollar building, and I, but I'll put parks down there." Like, I'd be looking for a job sooner than I'm looking for one now. But, not that I'm looking. The, but the thing about it is, it can very easily accommodate parks and community services addition, wing, whatever you want to say. We have some area of land to work with. You're a hundred percent correct, there are definitely economies of scale, you get, when we looked at the administration, like an entryway, you've got a lobby that now you can, people can talk to, somebody from Works, somebody from Engineering. So you've, now you've, if you incorporate a community services, that particular area can direct one person to three different, so a hundred percent. There's nothing stopping the town from looking at that. From a expenditure allocation in two thousand and six, two thousand and twenty-six, all we're proposing is to get some of the core infrastructure out of the way of the fuel, the wash bays, the salt, so that we can then plan a layout, so we don't have a design other than a conceptual space design that was proposed in the draft. In part of the five million that we're proposing includes now, yes, we say we need fifteen thousand square feet for fleet. How do we lay it out? We need ten thousand square feet for Engineering. Okay, can we add twenty thousand square feet for Community Services? Yes, where we would put, where we envisioned that being over here, you share a conference space, you share lunchrooms, you share whatever it might be. I've been in, and across North America at work facilities that do just that, that you come into the main door, that side is Engineering, that side's Works, that side's Community Services, they share space, they share training facilities, they share all that stuff. So a hundred percent, definitely, I don't want to give the impression that we can't do it. I was not, my scope was not brazen enough to assume that's what we want to do. But if council thinks that's something we want to do, when the time comes, if this is approved and for twenty-six, that would be scope, the scope of the design would be, "All right." And by the way, I know we're looking at Engineering, what would it take to incorporate thirty thousand square feet for Community Services and Parks? What does that look like?
Thank you, Mr. Lojé. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
And thank you, Your Worship. And just to Mr. Lojé, I didn't mean to insinuate that the town wasn't paving streets all along.
Oh, no, no, just a timing clarification, yeah.
Capital projects all seem to happen at the very end. But getting back to that on capital, I noticed that the Gondola Point lift station is not on schedule for next year, that it's going to skip a year. And I'm wondering, is that duly, solely due to budget constraints that we're trying to hold back? Or be, or is there another reason that it would be skipped a year because we're trying to get these, this project done? So if you could comment on that for me, thank you.
Sure thing. It is, it is primarily budget, because the last two pump stations have been created, completed through the Canada Bill's funds, the former gas tax, which expires in twenty-eight, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the last year that, and so that's when we've got, we've got to twenty-seven. Anyways, we pushed it out to the last year of that. So it is primarily budget-driven. We have a capital investment plan that we've, improvement plan that we've applied for that we followed through. If conditions dictate that we have to bring it forward, it would be a function of reapplying, reconfiguring our capital improvement plan. What we're seeing is that the gas tax, and I'll use that term, is only a portion of the cost, and the town still has to come good for some of that money. So it also goes back to our own, our own capacity. And if we don't have the ability to leverage, you know, two hundred grand to add to one point eight million, we can't get that two-million-dollar project. So it's really, it is primarily a budget function. And it will also, I think, we didn't want to make any presuppositions to your comments earlier about the Gondola Point Road and scheduling of the Gondola Point Road. While I respect the fact that, you know, I'd love to have it done tomorrow, we really don't know what we want to do. And I'll say it again, we don't know what it'll be when we grow up. So what is the road gonna look like? What is the trail's gonna look like? Is it just gonna be, just put in what we have there? Council really has to sign off on what they want to see, and that's why we haven't brought it ahead. We feel that where it's proposed now gives us the best opportunity to take the input that we've received this week, finalize the scenic plan, bring it back to council, legitimize with Community Services, you know, what are we doing from an amenities perspective? We putting benches, because that's going to impact their budget as well. So we think that linking the Street Capital Program on the Gondola Point Road, the Utility Program on the Gondola Point Road, we have a reasonable sequence of construction that will take us through a finished product that council will be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Lojé. Looks like we have gone through the capital budget for Community Services, capital budget for Utility and Engineering Works Department. Did you, would you like to comment, Mr. Wilson?
Yep, thank you, Worship, and through you, thanks for the discussion this afternoon. I think this, this has identified some, some areas of vulnerability, for sure. What I would say, though, is that from a budgeting perspective, I have heard and taken note of questions with respect to the amount allocated for Hammond River Trail. And other than that, there's questions around what is being done, but from a budget perspective, the question that I heard was allocation of those funds in particular. So I would ask for some latitude for staff to take that back. And if that is council's wish, first off, I think we should be clear about that being council's wish as a whole. So I would ask for a decision on council's, from council's perspective, on seeking opportunity, savings or spending, reduced spending opportunity in that amount, and then take it back to staff so that we come back to you with a reduction of that amount. However, I just wanted to reaffirm Ms. Burton-Dixon's comment that the total ask in Community Services of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is not a large ask, and for us to continue the expectations that our community has of us for recreational assets and for access to recreation, which we know is a major magnet to this community, I think we'd be remiss in not just trying to do what we can to preserve that modest ask. And if there's an ask to reduce by the amount allocated for Hammond River Trail, we can certainly look for it elsewhere. So I think from a, from a budget perspective, I think that's the question, is, do you want, are you looking to ask for a budget reduction of that much? And if so, we can look elsewhere for it and come back to you before we, before we meet again.
Thank you. Councilor Olson.
Thank you, Worship. I guess this would be the appropriate time to mention the new access road from Gondola Point Road to the one-nineteen. I wonder if that could be investigated and, and put some numbers to it and the possibility of doing that, because I think that would be a reconfiguration of the, of the end of the Gondola Point Road and, and future parking there for the Gondola Point Beach upgrade when that is scheduled for next year.
I'm just going to comment on what I had heard, and part of that is that it is part of the greater study that's being done. It also goes out onto a provincial road, so that will have to be dealt with, with the province as well. So to, we, I don't think it would be prudent to put it in the budget at this point in time, because it's not set until 2027 at this point. And as I say, we do have to have guidance from the provincial government at the same time. Mr. Lojé, did you want to contribute to that?
I was just acknowledging that you were correct. We know our MLA is in favor, is well aware of it, is sort of, has mentioned it on their terms. So it is something that I don't think will go unexamined as part of the bigger package, but you're correct, it's a little premature to put it in this year's program. But we can definitely get concepts and designs and costs when we do the bigger picture.
No, we have closed down, but I see several lights flashing, so I will go to Councilor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship, and I guess, since I'm the one that mentioned the one-eighty-five is, I'm not asking for a reduction right now, I'm just saying, I don't want to also say yes to everything right now, I want to see what happens after October thirty-first. And then maybe we'll get a nice signal on November fourth after the federal budget, because all of that, because you see our twelve million dollars, I think, one point nine million we have, or we know we're getting, is, that's the only thing that I stated, I'm not saying cut it, that's my personal, I was not saying cut it, just know that depending what happens on October thirtieth, because I can't say yes to everything right now, because we may, something else may happen by October thirtieth. I don't know, but that, that was my only thing, I didn't want, just kind of a comment that that's the only thing I could see that potentially would be an absolute new ask versus what we gotta do, and then, you know, maybe we're gonna get, you know, I mean, Rossay got money for their, all of a sudden, for their sewage thing, right? They got tons of money for that, so we gotta apply for that, that's not for next year, so. But for 2026, we'll see what happens or not happens, and then, because if we have to borrow ten million dollars, we're gonna have a different discussion on, on the final budget day, because that will make a difference.
Today, as you know, was purely for the discussion on what the two teams have come up with as far as the Department of Engineering, the Department of Community Services, and there's no vote today. So it just sort of brings to mind what, what is out there and what our first kick at this looks like. Councilor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. A few things, again, another thing that, I guess going to what Councilor Miller said, I realize that we're not going to a vote, and again, because it's not in full context of the entire budget, it might be okay, it might not be, but I do bring up the three hundred and fifty thousand for the council chamber space planning, like, that was the other thing. And I mean, I do want to thank staff for, I mean, I know that, you know, they've done a very thorough job trying to bring a very responsible budget to council, and I don't think any of us enjoy going through it line by line, trying to find money. You know, at the end of the day, you know, I mean, I guess our mission in terms of responsible governance means different things to different people. To me, it's also financial, like fiscal management, and we have to go back to our residents and justify if we're raising the taxes. So it's no fun for anybody, so I don't want anyone to think that we're picking on staff. I really appreciate the hard work they, you know, that went into this capital budget, because I know it wasn't an easy job to really kind of peel back the onion and find what's absolutely critical. And even just the fact that we can't even find many things that we were even questioning shows that. So anyway, those are, again, the same thing as just the trail, depending on what the operational budget looks like, and the council chamber space planning, again, and it might be great depending on what the rest... and it might be great depending on what the rest of the budget looks like the next time we meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson.
Uh, thank you, your worship, through you to Councilor Luck and others. Thank you, that was a miss on my part, I have a little dot beside that on my list as well. So, yes, the two items that I see as being potential placeholders that we park for now, recognizing we're not making any decisions today, uh, was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars and a three hundred and, is it forty-five? Three fifty? Uh, thank you, uh, for council chambers. So, uh, recognizing that, I would just ask that we set that amount aside, uh, for potential consideration later on, and that otherwise, we're considering that we're not, we're not seeing, and I thank you for your comments and for your support. We have worked hard at this to make sure that we bring you, uh, responsible, uh, budget that, uh, we feel is necessary, and as I know you saw from our earlier allocation in terms of the, in terms of how much of, of the, this year's budget is really about just renewing what we have versus any net new, um, this is pretty lean. Uh, but I, I, I hear you, uh, with respect to a potential need to look at a hundred and eighty-five plus three fifty, uh, and if we get to that point, maybe there's an opportunity for us to see where we best achieve those savings if that's required of council. So certainly look forward to that further discussion and appreciate the broader context that's required. I also appreciate that we need to start somewhere, and that having spent time on capital, I think, has been helpful for us to help, uh, frame up our next steps, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Next, uh, Councilor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I wasn't expecting, uh, when I was talking about the extending, uh, the, uh, Gondola Point Road to the arterial, I wasn't expecting it to win next year. I wanted just people thinking about it, possibly getting approvals from, uh, DOT, uh, when we, uh, are looking at the, their overall study in that, but I think that would be an improvement for that end of the road, where people wouldn't have to backtrack all through the, all through the road to get out into transport, to get out into easy access to, to the highway. So, uh, I think it's just worth, uh, investigating at this stage where, where we are doing some major work, potentially major work in the Gondola Point Road.
Thank you, uh, Mr., uh, Councilor Olson, and as, uh, Director Lozier said, it is on the radar, it is in the, it will be worked into the plans, and it does have the support at this point of our MLA Minister Kennedy. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Um, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to, um, clarify, so, um, on the, um, Hampton Road, where we put the whole amount in considering, taking into consideration that there's no grants, no, nothing. So if we get something, that's gravy. So my question is, is, um, the, two questions I have, number one, the street skate, when that was presented to us, there were different options. So which option represents this five million? Because I think they were different prices, dependent on the option. And so that's one question I have, and the last question on this I would have is, in the event that we do receive funding, say you have four million, I don't know, three million dollars of funding, can that funding be allocated to stormwater management such as the Gondola Point Road? Thank you.
Thank you, through your worship to the Deputy Mayor. Um, on the first question, the, uh, the street skate program, we chose the, uh, less expensive option, which was the multi-use trail, which is similar to what's being put up on the Millennium Drive, which would be proposed out on the, on the Gondola Point Arterial, or Gondola Point Road, if that was the case, just to be consistent from a, from a maintenance and management and, and design perspective, um, and ref- and, uh, budgetary considerations. Um, as was mentioned at the other evening, it is also, uh, something that can be phased if, is required from a budget perspective, so we, we chose that approach. Um, uh, and again, um, with the assumption that, uh, at some point we have to make an application, so we can clarify that with council before the application is finalized. Second part of the question is, if we apply for a housing fund grant, for example, or a, or an identified program, we cannot reallocate it to another capital item. So we can't say, oh, we got three million dollars for the Hampton Road, well, we're just going to use it over in Gondola Point Road. What it does do for us, though, internally, is it means that we can take our internal allocations and rea- readjust it appropriately, but we cannot specifically redirect, because all of those funds require proof of payment receipts, blah, 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 and we have to document it to get our money back. So that's, that, that's the primary reason, but it's, it, from an internal a- allocation, it's, you know, it's going to be six, one half dozen the other.
Thank you, Mr. Lozier. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Donovan, please.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, I, I would direct this towards the, uh, the CAO. I, and it's been said already, but I would, I would tend to, to agree and lend my voice for, in regards to the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for the council chambers. It, I, a lot of my guiding, sort of, we talked about guiding principles and practices earlier, and one of the things that I tend to consider, especially when we get into budget season, is if I were to be stopped in the grocery store, which I am quite often by people, and they, they'd seen that we had spent three hundred and fifty thousand, or, or allotted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the town hall chamber renovations to make it, you know, whether it be more comfortable, more practical, more, you know, updated for this council, I think I would have a very, a very hard time trying to explain that number. So I'm not entirely sure whether it's to earmark that number as well as the one eighty-five and try to figure out where we might be able to take that from the rest of the budget, um, or if it's to maybe look at that number and that budget line itself and see, because I, it's, it's also, it's hard for me, because I see three fifty, and I see that it's council chambers renovations, but I, I would almost like to be able to see that broken down, like what that actually entails, and maybe it was, you know, already explained, uh, in my absence, but, um, yeah, I just really, three fifty seems like a lot of money for me, so I, I would be a, be inclined to investigate that a bit more, but I'm sure we'll work that out over the coming weeks or so. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Mr. Watson, please.
Uh, yeah, thank you, your worship, and through you to Councilor Donovan. I agree. Uh, I think we were all surprised when, uh, our consulting engineers came back with an estimate that it was actually double that, uh, that there is just no way that any of us, uh, were comfortable with anything near what was being suggested, and even three fifty, I've heard loud and clear that, uh, despite us reacting to council's wish about this, this was council's direction to make sure that we made adjustments to the layout of, uh, of council chambers to enhance internal communication. So, um, we are reacting to that wish, but at the same time, wanting to keep this scaled to a level that is reasonable and achieves functionality, but doesn't, uh, demonstrate opulence, because that is absolutely not the objective. So I think I've heard that, uh, clearly, and if anything, um, you know, let's face it, this, this room is functioning today. Uh, the IT AV side is vulnerable, so I think, if anything, we would need to hone in on that side at the very least, and I, we would take council's direction as well with respect to a, a modest refresh in the lobby, but, uh, which does infect the safety and security of our front desk staff, but other than that, uh, we can certainly help pare that down to council's wishes. So thanks for that feedback, I appreciate that, and I agree completely.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you, Councilor Donovan. Uh, Councilor Bigger, please.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, let me just quickly echo comments that have been made here, I'm really appreciative of all the hard work by staff. Uh, as usual, great work, and, uh, really, I think it does really reflect, as has been said, the, kind of the, you know, honing in on the value of, uh, I won't say austerity, but trying to keep it lean and mean, and I think there's been some great work done in that regard, and as Councilor Luck points out, you know, we're struggling to find change in the couch cushions, virtually, in terms of what's there, so I think it's very, very, uh, responsible budgeting, and, uh, so thanks very much for that. Uh, and I just also want, I, um, CAO Watson just mentioned it, but I just wanted to say that the, the, um, the reworking of the council chamber has been a pending agenda item that we brought up, uh, as council, like, more than two years ago. So it's by no, I appreciate Councilor Donovan's point, because that's where it hits, the rubber hits the road, definitely, is out in the street when we're talking with folks about that kind of thing. Uh, and, uh, you know, uh, at the same time, if we want to meaningfully address the issues that have been, I won't say languishing, but have lingered on the pending agenda for a long time, you know, where we need to address it, uh, uh, fulsomely, and it's not about painting some racing stripes on the front of the desk here, I mean, there's some genuine changes that have to be made and probably upgrades where technology's concerned, and I appreciate that, as you pointed out, um, count, uh, CAO Watson, the, you know, an initial quote that came back was quite astronomical compared to what's in the ask here. I also agree with Councilor Donovan that the break, the breakdown as we proceed will be vital, to feel good about it, and to be able to go out and, uh, defend it with, uh, the residents. So I'm sure that we have a town hall that the people of the community want to feel very proud of, and they want to know that we're doing what we can to be both fiscally responsible and very effective at what we're doing. So, uh, thanks very much, and I'll look forward to seeing that pending agenda item finally off of there, maybe before the election.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Bigger. Uh, just in closing, it, I, I would like to point out that we have recognized ourselves and others recognize us, when they move here from away, we are known as a community of choice, a community of excellence, and the excellent part comes in when we look at the staff that are around this table, the staff that are sitting out, uh, in the audience today, and those who are, uh, in the workshops, wherever that might be, within this hot town hall, or, or in the works and parks departments. So I, I do certainly appreciate all that has been done here. I would like to say how important it is that when we come up with a strategic plan, a master transportation plan, a master recreation plan, that we allow those to be our guiding principles, and that we don't deviate. The only thing that will cause us to deviate is what we choose to take from or away from or do not have a budget for, but we really have to stick to what the strategic plan is directing us or where it is directing us. Uh, and as, uh, Councilor Bigger had pointed out, just as one example, it was brought up back in twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty, no, I guess the election was twenty twenty-one, so I believe it was like September, October of twenty twenty-one for a redesign of this council chamber. Uh, perhaps the, you know, the way that it came in with the, um, with, with an RFP, perhaps that is over budget, but that's up to us and up to staff to make sure that we get what we need and what we're looking for. The other thing, uh, I wanted to point out, just one final thing, is the safety of our employees. We have a new safety advisor now, manager, uh, in Mike Allen. Uh, I've talked with him on different occasions, and safety is number one for all of our staff, and I know that the works department is, can be upgraded. I don't want to say it's lacking, because, uh, those who are there keep an eye on it, they make sure that as far as the aesthetics are concerned, they've upgraded as much as you can an old sweater. So, you know, you can't make an old sweater look new, but you can kind of keep the warmth and the value in it. So as far as the upgrade to the works department, I think that is essential as well as we go forward, not for aesthetics, but for the safety of our employees. So with that said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Bigger and seconded by Councilor Dun- uh, Donovan on the question. All those in favor, just raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Councilor Donovan, you.
Everybody.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this afternoon, and we will see you again for the operations on October thirtieth.